Very cool, thank you. Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two Post Falls City Council meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are present. Do have a couple announcements. Last week's movie in the park was canceled due to severe weather, but the good news is it has been rescheduled. Sing Two is now playing at Syringa Park this Friday, August nineteenth, and the movie starts at sunset. City Hall and City Business Offices will be closed Monday, September fifth, in observance of Labor Day. Police, fire, and rescue services for life-threatening or in-progress emergencies may be reached by calling nine-one-one. The police department will be open for walking emergencies. For Water Department emergencies, call two zero eight seven seven three three five one seven. Tonight, we do have five public hearings, so if anyone wishes to testify, please fill out a form that's on the podium in the back and turn them into Shannon, and we'll give you time to speak. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
And declarations of conflict? Please present the consent calendar.
Item A is minutes from the August second, two thousand twenty-two City Council meeting. Item B is minutes from the August ninth, two thousand twenty-two City Council special meeting. Item C is payables July twenty-sixth through August eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Item D is cash investments for June, two thousand twenty-two. Item E is Douglas Properties Annexation City Council Legislative Decision. Item F is the Point Zone Change Reasoned Decision. Item G is Stones Thorough Subdivision Construction Improvement Agreement. Item H is Runage Improvement Waiver Request for two sixteen West Fourteenth Avenue. Item I is Utility Billing July two thousand twenty-two Refunds. Item J is Jaclyn Perry Annexation Development Agreement and Dedications of Right-Away and Easement. Item K is the Point Zone Change Development Agreement. And item L is the Jaclyn Perry Annexation Reasoned Decision.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I'd move for approval of consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion seconds, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We're now into the public hearings, and for anyone who hasn't been here before, when we call your name to testify, we'll ask you to come up and give your name for the record, and we'll ask that everybody respectfully listen to everyone, even though we may not agree with them. No comments from the audience, because we have to have everything recorded, so let's show everybody respect and listen to what they have to say, and we'll get everybody through the process. Appreciate your assistance in that regard. The first public hearing tonight is the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. That'll open the public hearing. All right, good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Jason Faulkner, the Finance Director. I'm going to do this in a little different order than I have before. I forget to launch here. Hold on. Okay. All right, the first slide I want to show is just comparatively at a higher level. Last year, for the budget of fiscal year twenty-two, which is what we're in, and it ends on September thirtieth, I have it in the left column. I broke it out by, just a higher level, by general fund, dedicated general fund accounts, which are the personnel benefits, which is funded by the general fund, and annexation. And then I have special revenue funds, which are drug seizure, nine-one-one, those type. The capital funds, which are the impact fees, police, parks, streets. And this year, we added a new impact fee, which is going to be fire and EMS. Debt service is pretty explanatory, and also enterprise funds. Those are our rate-paying funds, which are water, garbage, and also wastewater. As we talked about at the budget workshops, each one of these funds are like a checkbook accounting, have to keep them separate. I can't cross over between enterprise funds, general funds. Those monies are to be kept separate. So whether we have grant monies or not, that are funding a project, I still have to record the, I still have to budget for the expense, because it's what is flowing through the city. So for every expense, as you can see, I'm supposed to have offsetting revenue by state code to present a balanced budget. So in fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, the budget is one hundred seventy-three million, and the budget for twenty-three that I'm proposing is a total of one hundred thirty thousand. And I'll go through.
Thirty million?
Oh, one hundred thirty million, sorry.
That's a cut in the corner.
Sorry. Yeah, one hundred seventy-three million was for fiscal year twenty-two, and one hundred thirty million for fiscal year twenty-three. And so this gives a higher level, but in the next few slides, which are quite a bit of them, we'll just recap the larger amounts, because there's some supplies, items that we had increased, and I gave those in the council packet. What I'm going to hit here is the higher-level expenses, so everybody can see what we have planned for fiscal year twenty-three. There's actually quite a bit, really. All right, so the first part, we're going to talk about the general fund. We have certain things that we're going to propose to spend, such as, I broke it out by the departments. So for police, there'll be a license plate recognition contract for ten thousand parts, fourteen thousand for the LPR, ten thousand for the auto parts. Prosecutor is wanting to have a case management software of forty-eight thousand four twenty-five. Streets are wanting to do traffic repairs of twenty thousand. Fleet has the parts and supplies, ten thousand. GIS has a software increase, nine thousand sixteen dollars. And Community Development has a new software, OpenGov, and their maintenance contract for fiscal year twenty-three is fifty-three thousand eighty-five. So that was for operating expenses, and I broke it out in categories. So for the operations, for general fund, the next section is for personnel. And what we're proposing total is eleven FTEs, and these are the FTEs where we are asking council for approval of. The PDE is requesting a crime analyst, also four patrol officers, street maintenance workers. Streets is requesting to ask for two full-time employees. With the vehicles that the city currently has, Fleet is requesting a senior mechanic position. Cemetery is asking for a cemetery worker, parks worker in the parks department. And we also wanted to note overtime allowance. The city is a comp-time employer, but after a while, there's only so much comp time that the employees will have, so we have decided to ask council to allow the parks to have a limited amount of overtime. The department head needs to monitor how much they spend in overtime, and so with the proposal that we have is a limit of sixteen thousand dollars for the year. And also with building, they have a need for an additional electrical inspector. I want to point out that these positions that we are proposing is fully loaded, which means its salary, its retirement, its FICA, includes medical, so those are the all-encombered costs. For fiscal year twenty-three, we discussed that a COLA merit for its current employees, and we have tied our COLA to Percy, which this year gave three-and-a-half percent, and then there would be a four-and-a-half percent merit increase. And Shelley had asked out, asked the other city administrators in North Idaho what other cities are doing as well, and they're also doing the eight percent COLA merit. So we are right in line with the other entities are doing locally. The HR department did a salary survey, and says, is requesting that we adjust certain positions up. And insurance and HRA Viva is eight hundred twenty-one thousand. So that's proposed for the personnel expenses. The third category I wanted to go over for general fund is for capital. Of course, when we have the new patrol officers, we're going to need some vehicles for that, so the patrol vehicles are being requested. Streets is going to do a project to, for West Seltice Reconstruction. Streets is also asking for administration building redesign. City Hall parking lot will be, as we're requesting for that to be rehabbed, at fifty thousand dollars. Fleet Maintenance has current vehicles that they want to replace. And one thing about the, we talked about, even though there is a different funding source for replacement vehicles, we still have to budget for it, because it's an expense. And over the years, as the vehicle's life has ran out, we estimate over five years, because for accounting purposes, I use five years. So by the end of the life of the vehicle, I have set money aside each year to replace the vehicle. So the department purchases, purchases the original vehicle, Fleet will do the replacement vehicle, so they have the money for that. Parks is asking for a one-ton pickup truck, two of those. Parks is also wanting to do a parks equipment replacement, same thing with the replacement. Over the five years of the equipment, I have set money aside, so when we replace it, there's the money already available. And also Spokane Street refurbishment of the art display just north of the railroad tracks, the metal sculptures on the side that are attached to the railings, those are needed to be rehabbed, so those will be ten thousand. And also for completion of the parks post-falls landings, for five hundred fifty-one thousand. Jason, real quick, on the police vehicles, that's police vehicle fully equipped? It's fully equipped, it has everything on it. It's, once the vehicle's purchased, we have an outside company that installs the light bars and all the equipment, so when the police vehicle comes back, it's ready to go, and that's the full cost of it, yeah. Okay, and we have talked about impact fees. What we do with impact fees is we, over the years, we've collected the money, and so when you see the Treasurers Investment Report, the cash balance is getting kind of high. But in order to do a project, we need to balance the cash balance in order to go out for bid, and then we can do the project. Well, now we finally have the money to do these projects, and again, we have to keep the money separate, so we have the streets and the parks. So for streets, one of the projects they're going to do is the Seltice-Mullen Transportation Study. They're going to do an upgrade at the Chase Union Pacific Railroad Crossing. They want to do a transportation master plan. And also, there's going to be a roundabout proposed for Prairie and Zorros area, so that's just for streets. The Parks Department, they have, looks like they're going to be quite busy this year. Black Bay, they have proposed for a million five. Montrose Ball Field for a million one. Additional land acquisition for the Montrose Ball Field for eight hundred thousand. Community Garden for a hundred thousand. Sports Complex Phase One of one-point-one. Contracts and Professional for fifty thousand, and an impact fee study to update impact fees for fifty thousand, fifteen thousand, sorry. And this year is a new impact fee that we will be collecting on behalf of the Cootney County Fire and EMS, and so we're estimating about two million of costs of those, so we'll collect the money, and then we'll just forward it on to the Cootney County Fire and EMS. Okay, for facility building reserves, John had done a study to what would be our future needs. As soon as Post Falls is growing, we have additional staff, and so there's going to be additional facilities needs, whether it's for streets or parks. And part of that study was to build out. So what we have, with going along that study, every year, I have set money aside, you'll see in the budget, for facilities, I've set money, so when we come forward with council to spend the million four, I have that money set aside, is in a reserve. So part of that land acquisition that is proposed is for a million four? Okay. Moving along to the water division, the utilities, like I said, what funds the utilities division is the fees. So whenever the water rates increase, they have looked at what the capital needs are going to be, what the employees' needs are, and also any operating costs, and they've planned out those construction costs over the years, and that's what the rates pay for. So in operations, they are looking, they're asking a request of twenty thousand for a locate service, first aid of seven thousand, maintenance supplies of a hundred and ten thousand, computer software maintenance for twenty thousand, and building and ground maintenance of an increase of ten thousand. There's not much going on in water this year, just wait till we get to the wastewater department. So with capital, for oversizing construction costs, twenty thousand. Replacement of a backhoe, with the replacement, again, I set money aside for the backhoe, so we have that money, we still have to budget for it. Fifty thousand, fifty-seven thousand, sorry. We are asking for a radio read meter update, fifty thousand. A remote camera system for nine thousand. A storage facility at the water department for thirty-five thousand. And again, truck replacement, which we have the money set aside, for a hundred fifty-three thousand. Not much going on in the water department, but like I said, wait till we look at the wastewater. Before we move on to there, we have some capital needs as well, that will be funded by the, through rates. There is a Spokane Street Fire Flow Pipe Upgrade. We are rehabbing a wellhouse, well number eleven, for a million six. Distribution System Design, software updates, upgrades, a well for rehab, a control software conversion, hydrant replacement program, a handheld radio read, and also a threading machine replacement. That's what the water department is asking for. All right, the reclaimed water division, we've had, there will be a lot of operating and capital requests. Part of this is due to the expansion that's going on at the wastewater plant, that's, it's going to require more supplies, electricity, so they have tried to plan accordingly. So the request for supplies for caustic is two hundred and forty thousand. Additional chlorine, fifty-six thousand four hundred, polymer. Biosolos disposals, five hundred and fifty thousand. Electricity is estimated to increase four hundred and twenty thousand over prior year. Again, plant maintenance and repairs because of the larger facility. Additional for building and grounds maintenance, irrigation accounts, one hundred and twenty thousand. Locate services for fifteen thousand. And there's a different one for, there's two electric companies, and the second one for Cootney Electric is estimated to increase twenty thousand, and they have contracts and professional of an increase of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Okay, we're continuing on with the operating for reclaimed water. Aluminum sulfate for twenty-five thousand, and various supplies, whether it's for dechlorination chemicals, citric, or a locate. With all of the increases that's going on at the wastewater department, they have asked for additional staffing, which would include a industrial pretreatment technician of seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and one, and also a pretreatment and stormwater specialist, ninety-eight thousand nine oh one. Again, those are both fully loaded positions from salary to benefits as well. Here we go with the capital projects, which are quite a few, which, there's a lot going on. Spokane and Prairie has a sewer project of four hundred thousand. A pickup vehicle for the treatment lead of forty-five thousand. Replacement truck, two replacement trucks, one for forty-five thousand, one for a hundred thousand. Lawnmower replacement for ten thousand. And a truck replacement for the Vector, which is another replacement vehicle, five hundred thousand. Service truck replacement, a hundred thousand. Facility plan, two hundred and fifty-five thousand. The large project they have going on for the tertiary treatments, fifteen million. The outfall upgrade of two hundred and fifty thousand. Oversizing construction cost of fifty thousand. I know John was wanting to update the rate study based on the collection component, so that cost is estimated to be about twenty-five thousand. Pondrosa lift station of a million, and also redesign of the wastewater facility lab building of eighty-two thousand. Keep on going for a camera truck of a hundred and fifty. Corbin Lift Station of a little over two million. Bentley Lift Station for three hundred and fifteen thousand. Plant upgrades for solids, dewatering, and storage of two hundred and fifty thousand. A wastewater contingency for a million. Fisher Lift Station, which is going to be three hundred and fifty-five thousand. North Regional Lift Station of two-point-one million. Request for purchase of additional land in two thousand twenty-three for fifty thousand. Seltice Forest Maines will estimate a five-point-two million, and Twelfth Avenue Forest Main of two-point-five million. There's a lot going on in that division, that's for sure. And that is what I had for any of the capital items. We did pretty much, like I gave out the request in the budget packet, and we went over those at both of the budget workshops, but I wanted to do the side-by-side comparison of what the budget was for this year and what is, what's proposed for next year, and also highlight the items that we are asking council to approve for the next budget cycle. Any questions, Jason, at this point? Okay. All right, the next section I want to talk about is property tax. The city has some main sources of income, building permits, property tax, state sales, and shared distribution of the state revenues, fuel taxes, and liquor. Those vary from year to year. Property tax is mostly our stable one, but I have a proposal for council for this year. There's a little narrative I want to read that Shelley and Warren and myself had worked on prior to council. The explanation on property tax certification. Cities are authorized to increase their property tax-supported budgets up to three percent annually. As you're aware, for thirteen years, the city of Post Falls has not used its property tax authority, with one exception, to retire a legally suspect fee. Until House Bill three eighty-nine adopted in two thousand twenty-one, cities are allowed to take a hundred percent of new growth and annexation, as well as urban renewal district closures. This allows cities to ensure that new growth more fully paid for itself. New annexation and construction values are added to the tax rolls each fall, which in a nutshell allows the city to receive tax dollars to provide services to the newly annexed constructed properties and facilities. Under House Bill three eighty-nine, cities will take, still take the three percent increase to their property tax support budgets, but are now limited to taking ninety percent of new construction and annexation values, and eighty percent of urban renewal district closures, up to an overall cap of eight percent total. So if a hypothetical city takes its new growth and annexation, and is allowed to take three percent budget increase, and the total amount that the city would be allowed to collect was, for example, ten percent, House Bill three eighty-nine would limit them to a maximum of eight percent. For the city of Post Falls this year, the eight percent allowance equals one million fifty-two thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. The total I'm requesting for the council to certify this year is five hundred sixty-one thousand five seventy-four. This reflects taking the, allowing ninety percent of new growth and annexations, and eighty percent for the closed urban renewal district, which uses a small amount, seventeen point four percent of the three percent, of the city's three percent authority to make up the missing ten percent and twenty percent respectively, from the new growth annexations, the new, the urban renewal district, of the, sorry, and the urban renewal district closure. This ensures that the city is capturing the dollars from the new growth necessary to help offset the service needed for the new growth. So before the House Bill three eighty-nine, and after the House Bill three eighty-nine, of three eighty-nine, the dollar amount that I'm requesting will be the same. We would be allowed under a hundred percent of, with new growth annexation of a hundred percent and urban renewal closure of a hundred percent, the total will be five hundred sixty-one thousand. What I'm asking council is to use a portion of the three percent, which won't increase property taxes, but will just make the city whole of what they lost from House Bill three eighty-nine. And so that amount total is sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. The five hundred sixty-one, five seventy-four is added to the current thirteen million one hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, bringing the new budget to thirteen million seven hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred and three. So this is a little, it is a little difficult to understand, because we didn't get these values from the county until recently. They missed the deadline, so we didn't have an opportunity to talk about this. So what happened was the Point Parkway Expo closed, and so it allowed, the value of that was a hundred and, sorry, sixty-four, let's see if they have the dollar amount here exact. The total expiring urban renewal value was sixty-one million dollars, at a hundred percent. The eighty percent of the urban renewal brought it down to forty-nine million one hundred sixty-three thousand five fifty-five. Take that by the reduced levy rate, because now that the taxable value of the property at Post Falls lowered the levy rate, that forty-nine million allow the city to have a hundred and one thousand for tax revenue coming in. So I had a little PowerPoint here to also illustrate it. So our best, base levy rate from, we can take the highest of the last three years, so that's where I got the thirteen million one fifty-seven one twenty-nine. With the new construction figures at ninety percent, that's the three hundred eighty-one thousand. Annexation at ninety percent, that's the nine thousand. And urban renewal at eighty percent is the hundred and one thousand. So the total would be thirteen million six hundred forty-nine thousand eight thirty-eight. But what I am asking council is for, we have a three percent that's allowed, we could take by law, but we don't, I'm not asking for all of it, just the ten percent that we weren't allowed to get from new construction annexation, and twenty percent from urban renewal. So the amount that we would normally roll over to forgone, instead of the full three percent of the three ninety-four, the amount to forgone would be three hundred twenty-five thousand eight forty-nine. And I always like to see what it would have been last year. We didn't do this last year, but I wanted to see what the total would be. Again, I list the three percent, this year was three hundred ninety-four thousand, last year was three hundred eighty thousand. And oddly enough, with the dollar amounts, the levy rate had reduced a little bit for this year, that it's almost equal amount that we were able to surrender to forgone. So last year, the amount to forgone was three hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred and two. Sorry, yeah. And this year was three hundred twenty-five thousand eight forty-nine. So that's a side-by-side comparison. We didn't do this last year, but this year, with the closure of the urban renewal district, we thought we would present this to council and see what everybody would decide. And so I know I threw a lot at you. Jason, what's that do, the levy rate? The levy rate is currently.
I actually ran the levy rates just beforehand, so I'm going to jump in here. So at twelve, in two thousand and twelve, our levy rate was five point eight nine, so five dollars eighty-nine cents per thousand of market value. The levy rate this year is two dollars and seven cents per thousand of market value, so it's about a third of what it used to be, and that's because of the increasing market values that are being assessed across the city, plus the new construction values that have come on. So it doesn't actually do, when we, if we take the extra ten and twenty percent, the levy rate remains at that two-point-oh-seven for the fiscal year.
And it's important to note that we try to be fiscally responsible, we try to not increase that levy rate, but even with the levy rate decreasing, with the assessed values going up, and the shift from the commercial to the residential side, taxes can still go up. So our goal is to try to keep that levy rate as low as we can.
So we will have, and that's, it's always behind time, even though this year, with the delays from the county, it's further behind than it normally would be. So we'll go out and calculate and tell you, if your home value increased by this percentage, whether or not you'll see an increase, because it's based on the percentage break-even point on our overall market values. We don't have those figures yet, I don't have the GIS data to calculate it, but once we have that, we'll be able to tell you what that percentage is. But overall, the city increased about sixty-five percent in our total market value for the year. Levy rate dropped from three-point-four-one last year to two-point-oh-seven this year, so it was a significant, it's the largest drop we've had over the ten-year span from two thousand twelve to current, was because of this large market value increase. We have not seen a sixty-five percent increase in market value ever before on the record.
How confident are we in the numbers?
I shouldn't say that, in the twenty-five years I've been here, we haven't seen it. In the twenty-five years I've been here, we haven't seen it. I'm tired of that maybe.
How confident are we in the numbers that we receive from the county?
Um, those numbers are the numbers that we will be using. Um, and the appeals are complete, so the the numbers are the numbers. You may disagree with the number that you're being assessed at, but that would be the number that this, that will be used to certify the taxes this year.
Well, the reason I asked the question is, if you read the articles, you've got different, uh, parts of the county government saying that, uh, we were late getting it and others saying, but the numbers didn't balance and so I think they've worked it out.
Yes, the auditor's office did get the numbers, um, and, uh, went through and they reconciled them and said they did balance.
Okay. Any questions, Jason?
I have a question.
Yes, Carrie.
The remedial version. So if taking seventeen point four percent of the three percent forgone.
Yes. Well, no, of the three percent that we're allowed to take, the rest would roll to forgone.
Oh, okay. Then that might have answered it, because you said that won't raise taxes.
No, it will not.
Okay.
And forgone is just authority, so that's, that amount that rolls over there is just, and Carrie, you bring this up every time, so that's why I'm jumping in. It's just authority, so when people hear about three hundred and twenty-five thousand rolling over to forgone, it's just taxing authority. It's not any taxes that are being certified or, um, actually charged to the businesses or residents of Post Falls.
And there will be a resolution coming back for the amount that I rolled to forgone. And if council wanted to use any forgone, I'd have to do a resolution for that as well, so it it draws attention to any forgone being used and also being saved over.
And House Bill three eighty-nine regulates how much of the forgone you can use, which is, in general, there are some exceptions, but in general, it's one percent is all you can use.
I've stated this before, but with House Bill three eighty-nine, my concern is I have no idea where they came up with the ninety percent or the eighty percent. I've seen no justification, no mathematical calculation. Uh, it's, to me, it was just numbers. And so if we've got new growth that adds to the, uh, tax basis at Post Falls, in my opinion, the city should be able to use that full value, which would then, in my opinion, again, help mitigate taxes for some of the other residents. And on a, on urban renewal district, that's our fifth one we've closed.
Yeah.
I think we're the, we closed the first one, we've closed more than any, we're good stewards of urban renewal, we get the projects done, hopefully try to close them early. And why there's a limit of eighty percent of that, it's, my my concern is the same thing. We've got this tax assessed value out there and they're only allowing us eighty percent, so I have no idea, uh, what the, uh, reasoning for House Bill three eighty-nine was. And, uh, what I can say is it does tend to complicate the whole process.
It does, yeah, it's true.
Well, it forces us to do kind of a budget sleight of hand. It was, you know, going back eight or ten years when we eliminated the fee and raised the taxes general fund to offset that, you know, it looks like we raised taxes, but it's, it was to offset a fee, so it was a net wash. So in this case, we can't take all the revenue from the growth to pay for the growth. So because we can't take that, we've got to take it from a different bucket. So it all balances out to zero, it just looks really goofy.
And Sheldon and I were talking today, when it comes time to close the East Post Falls, with what we had anticipate will be a lot less because of the levy rate reduction. Um, so it'd be interesting to see what the levy rate really is when that district closes.
And you may have read the Cordline Press had an article on Cordline where they're closing, closing a large district and they had the same conversation with council. Sorry, I can't talk, I had some dental work done today. So they were looking at the same thing, how do we recapture some of this? Because we estimated the closure of this district and now our levy rate has significantly reduced and so we can't get the taxes out of that, that it has been producing in prior years.
Any other questions, Jason? Thank you. Anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
With that, I will close the public hearing. And we need a motion to, we have to have another hearing on the.
No, this is it.
This is it?
You just need a motion to bring an ordinance forward for the budget to the next council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Much passes, thanks. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
It's a lot of numbers, a lot of moving parts, and like I say, when you've got different restrictions and limitations, uh, it does complicate it, so I appreciate you detailing the way you did. It was, uh, a lot of numbers, but.
Generally, what happens in the past was a county would give me some type of preliminary figures to go from, knowing that it was very preliminary, it was very obvious, they would say it's very preliminary, just gave me something to present to council and this year they wouldn't give nothing, so.
Well, and I think you you brought up a couple of good points on equipment replacement. Uh, you know, we use the depreciation of equipment, so when you see all these funds being expended for equipment, they're already set aside.
They are.
Number one. Uh, and, uh, when you look at vehicles, for example, for the police department, equipping a police car costs more than the police car. So, or when you look at salaries, that that's all in, it's not someone making ninety-eight thousand dollars a year in salaries. I I think it's important to note that, so.
And I just wanted to thank both Jason and Warren for their work on the property tax stuff today, but the department heads in general for all the work they put into preparing this budget and bringing it to you this year.
Well, it's, what's nice, and City Post Falls started doing this many years ago, but, uh, they start the process at the department head level and they get together and they all look at what their needs and wants are and then they they work together to bring us in a bu- a balanced budget. And everybody's give, everybody's getting something, but everybody's giving up something as well. So it's a good, uh, it's a good team effort, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next item up, public hearing is the update to the fee resolution for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and I'll open that public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the time where we go over the fee resolution. And in the packet, again, I had tried to highlight in yellow what was going to change and there's a lot of parks fees, we did a little up and down on various, various based on, um, what they estimated the classes would be. So I tried to, I did a pretty good job highlighting those, but I wanted to go over, if you look through the fee resolution, um, okay, uh, just here's a recap of what we are looking at. Water and wastewater, there has been some, there, we are pulling these rates off of a study, and so the water rates are, the study suggests that we increase the, uh, three percent. Wastewater, two and a half percent. And for anybody that can remember, when I first started in twenty thirteen, we were doing fourteen and a half percent increases. The rates are still increasing, but it's in a much smaller amount, so this year I'm proposing to increase wastewater two and a half percent. Reclaimed water cap fees, this is based on a FCS group study that, um, the Idaho Home Builders Association took a conception to how we used to bill, uh, create re- cap fees. So we're using the, the model that came out of the, uh, from, from the court litigation. And so we have ta- we do that model in-house now, so cap fees for reclaimed water increase for sixteen point three percent. Water cap fees, there will be a decrease of thirteen point three percent. Impact fees, we use E and R, the engineering news record from April to April, and that has been eight point nine percent. And sanitation fees, uh, there's an increase of seven percent. I wanted to talk about sanitation fees. This fee, this rate also includes, um, we have a contract with Post Fall Sanitation and it spells out different indexes that we allow and there's a percentage that they get. So, um, also, an add-on would be any type of, um, fuel surcharge, if the diesel fuel's up to a certain amount, Phil gets a additional amount added to it, which next year, if there's no fuel surcharge, that the amount for the fuel surcharge is backed off. So it's not like he gets that rate forever, it's, he gets a fuel charge this budget cycle and the next one that could come off, depending on the price of diesel.
And Jason, we've actually decreased sanitation fees in the past.
We have, we have not taken the increase in the past years, yes. That's correct. Okay, so the fees look really good when you look at the, um, the increases or you think, okay, well, the three percent for water, the two and a half for sewer, what does that really look like? And so just doing a household comparison for a sanitation year to year, if you take the current rates we have for fiscal year twenty-two, uh, for five units of water, uh, your monthly bill should be right around ninety-five dollars and forty-three cents for residential. What I'm proposing for the sanitation increases, the water, the water usage and the wastewater for fiscal year twenty-three, I'm proposing that the, your, uh, the unit, uh, I'm sorry, the bill for five units would be ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents, which a total variance of three dollars and one. The percentage all look good, but it really means, what does it mean for the customer? There's also a discussion in my offices, recently have received calls for, um, uh, there is a program to discount the wastewater program. Either you have to be part of the circuit breaker with the county or you have to beat, um, certain income restrictions to get a reduction in utility bill. We do offer that program through my office as well. And that's all I had for the fees. If there's any questions.
Questions on the fees? Those who go in, go into effect October first?
Yes, if approved, they'll go, I'll bring a resolution back to the next council meeting and those will go affect October first.
I see it right there now, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I didn't read it.
That's all right.
Any questions? Anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
I will close that public hearing. We need a motion to bring the resolution forward?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Shove?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Much passes, thanks. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Next public hearing tonight is Ashler Ranch Annexation.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, city council members. I'm Laura Jones, Associate Planner with the City of Post Falls, introducing to you the Ashler Ranch Annexation. The property owner is VS Development LLC. The applicant is Olson Engineering. And tonight, the applicant is requesting annexation approval with the zoning designation of single-family residential R1 on approximately ten acres. The property is located east of Highway forty-one and north of Twelfth Avenue, as indicated in red on the vicinity map. Currently, the site is not being utilized, however, there's a large storage building on the property. Like most properties within our city limits, it is situated over the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer. Ross Point Water District is the water purveyor and the City of Post Falls will provide wastewater reclamation services. Looking at the surrounding land uses, um, to the north is Cootney County, um, a large lot that is multifamily with a mobile home park. To the east and south are large lot, single-family properties within Cootney County. And again, to the west is a mobile home park, multifamily, uh, within Cootney County. Uh, to the southwest, just for a reference, is the R1 Crimson King Estates, right here. And with this annexation, we're going to do things, um, try a new approach with it and John's going to come up and talk about potential benefits the city gains from annexations as well as concerns, um, that might come forward with this annexation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Thorson, and other members of city councils. So, yes, in discussions with the community development director, Bob Seal, and then with other, um, staff representatives, it was determined that sometimes when we just stick to the goals and policies, we don't go over the nuts and bolts of kind of how annexations may fit in the area. So I'm just kind of going to go through some, some things that that can occur through either developing or not developing through annexation. So, so looking at additional benefits, uh, looking at prevent substandard development in the county, it's possible if, you know, it's in an exclusive tier, you presume it's in an exclusive tier, it's dedicated, it'll eventually always be developed in the City of Post Falls. That's not necessarily true. They do have the option to go apply to the county and protest and go counter to our area-city impact. What the area-city impact is, that's a shared agreement through multiple jurisdictions, Rathdrum, Hayden, Post Falls, and Cortlande, on where the boundaries are exclusively and also areas that are shared. Benefits, they also address future housing, I mean, future needs through annexation. It promotes compatible, well-designed development, so with annexations, and you'll see this come up on a couple of their, um, highlighted points. It, we get our right-of-way, we get improved streets, we get pedestrian connectivity that allows residences who may have to go through, um, you see this on Chase Road, we have pockets on Chase Road going north-south where we have county standards and we have city standards. Once they get all improved and they get the connection, that's improved connectivity for all residents along those corridors. Potentially, like in this case, we have a lack of single-family residences available, so creating additional single-family opportunities would be a benefit. Could create housing for residents of all ages. With development and with annexation, they do pay the impact fees for parks, public safety streets, and multimodal transportation. You saw that with, uh, tonight's budget presentations of how the impact fees played a role in some of the expenditures. And that's growth paying for growth. Highway forty-one is near completion, so projects along this corridor will have access to that corridor. And on top of that, the interchange is planned to be completed by twenty twenty-five. You'll see that come up also as, um, a concern also tonight. But with the timing of development, like in a case of an annexation, by the time you annex, you get through the agreements, you go through your site plan review process, the chance of you getting a CO prior to twenty twenty-five would be slim, and so you would be timing that in coordination with the the interchange. I already mentioned the dedication and enhanced adjoining roadways. Plan for and protect transportation corridors from encroachment and preserve adequate rights away for future corridors, including utilities and facilities. Contributes to the expansion of the Twelfth Avenue lift station in Forest Main in the southern sewer line of the actual Meyer line. It's kind of confusing, we have the alternative Meyer line, which goes down Fenwickus, and then we have the Meyer line, which is on Meyer. So this portion that you see tonight that'll be considered on this, on the Ashler is at that yellow box and that, a part of that development, there is a baggage road system, which I'll show you on the next slide, and this would be, they would need to plan and coordinate that, uh, sewer extension to allow, if there are ever any annexations out in these other larger areas down the road, a path for sewer to potentially get to the So this here may be confusing, but from the left to the right, on the left side, you see the Highway forty-one corridor with the future land use map overlaid from Prairie to about Mullen. Couldn't zoom out anymore without losing roads or other networks. So looking at how it could potentially, and odds are how we're just going to continue to get requests going forward for land use actions on additional public hearings, is you'll more than likely see ask or will see development of commercial in nature on the east side of forty-one. You see that blue line there, that blue line actually connects up to Prairie Avenue, but that is what is considered the eighth mile frontage road. And then the yellow line is the quarter-mile baggage road, and then you have a half-mile baggage road. And this is baggage roads that are planned in the KMPO master plan as part of the ultimate Highway forty-one system going north-south. And so with annexations and getting the right-of-way and getting development, you, those plans can come into fruition as they've been timed. You can see also between the quarter-mile, more than likely, you would see additional requests for medium or high-density type projects between that eighth mile baggage or frontage road to the quarter-mile. Looking at it to the further east, kind of overlaid with the aerial and looking at how you can see it more than likely transitioning, you would see a commercial swath, you'd see the medium to higher density, transitioning to what is planned, being more single-family in nature, lower density within the focus area as called out for the transitional designation. Some concerns with annexations could be approximately, one of them is approximately twenty-five percent of the workforce can afford single-family houses now, whereas five years ago, seventy-five percent of the workforce could afford single-family homes. That doesn't say that we don't need additional single-family housing stock, we do, it's just, uh, one of the facts that we've been presented. And even if, what I was reading today, if we get a fifteen percent correction on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home, you're still leaving out a lot of a workforce that can purchase a single-family home. We acknowledge that the interchange is under construction and should be considered. It's a temporary inconvenience, it will be constructed. Issues with that and timing pertaining to the construction, there's opportunities in a development agreement to condition, whether it's a permit or a CO, so that way when the single-family residence came online, it would be after the construction of that interchange. Adequate parks could be another concern. East of Highway forty-one, there's not a lot of established parks currently east of forty-one. You have Foxtown, it does have a planned, I believe, an eight-point-four acre park that'll be a city park, but it currently, it's not constructed. There is a school up in that direction. There is a school up in that direction. We'll note, though, that the Post Fall, I mean, this comprehensive plan did look at, under the Parks Chapter in the comprehensive plan, areas that were more preferred for future city parks or open space areas to deliver a better system long-term. So with annexations, if they are encumbered by these areas, we would seek in those annexation agreements to get the lands dedicated more centrally located within those green areas. Impacts to schools is another item of concern with annexations. I would refer to the comment letter that was sent to the city. Parking, a lot of times you see with different developments, parking, a lot of those issues are transitional during construction and then they get relieved post-construction as they develop the road. They widen it from a two-lane road to more than likely a cross-section with on-street parking, unless it's an arterial with parking restrictions. So, that, just want to bring up the focus area. The comprehensive plan does look at the East Prairie focus area and its goals and policies, the transitional area that you see a lot of times in here, the blue. When you read it, it generally says big thematic themes, like when you're along a major arterial, you want higher-intense uses. As you move away from that, you go to your lesser intense. You see that in, kind of depicted here. And that's referenced in the focus area, which Laura will go in more detail when she goes through the zoning criteria part of it. Any questions for me or other staff? Engineering's here also, if you want to talk about annexations and how it may pertain to the interchange or 41 or other aspects.
Any questions? Do you remember this point? Thanks, Shannon.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the zone change review criteria. The first is that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map. As John mentioned, this area is located in the transitional area in blue. Again, indicated on the map. This area is designated to lands that are suitable for growth and is guided by the focus area in the comprehensive plan. Again, as John mentioned, this is in the East Prairie focus area, which the comprehensive plan states that it is slated for relatively intensive residential development. And East Prairie is well-positioned to mixed development densities to leverage large community service, to leverage community services and transportation infrastructure. And it also supports development patterns that are interconnected and that provide pedestrian connectivity to all multi-use paths and trails. The next criteria is that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the goals and policies found in the Post Falls comprehensive plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission looked at these goals and policies, and this is what helped guide them towards their zoning recommendation that was forwarded to you. So they reviewed Goals 5, 6, and 7, which are to keep Post Falls neighborhoods safe, vital, and attractive; maintain and improve Post Falls transportation network on pace and in concert with need and plan objectives, which John touched on briefly in his overview; and to plan for and establish types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls, supporting community needs and the city's long-term sustainability. They also looked at Goals 8 and 14, which are to protect and maintain Post Falls natural resources, including clean air, soils, river, and aquifer, and minimizing light and noise pollution citywide; and to involve the community of Post Falls in all local government planning and decision-making. Policies that support those goals include Policy 1 and 2, which we review with almost all annexations. And those cover items such as maintaining and enhancing community levels of service, the fiscal health of the community, quality of life for the residents, compatible and well-designed development. And with Policy 2, looking at the future land use map and compatibility with surrounding land uses. Again, we've touched on those two already. The infrastructure and service plans, and then also the existing and future traffic patterns. As mentioned previously, with the infrastructure and service plans, the City of Post Falls will provide water reclamation services, and we have the capacity and willingness to serve the property. And Ross Point Water District also has the willingness and capacity to serve the site, which the applicant provided a will-serve letter to the city stating that. Additional policies that were reviewed is Policy 15, ensure that adequate land is available for future housing needs and help, helping serve residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities through the provision of diverse housing types and price levels. Policy 24, for, to plan for and protect transportation corridors from encroachment and preserve adequate rights-of-way for future corridors, including utility facilities. Again, John touched on that with the annexation. They would dedicate the additional rights-of-ways and improve the frontages. Policy 27, work to improve street connectivity in all areas of Post Falls, improving walkability, public health and safety, and transportation efficiency. This would be relevant to the north-south connections of that eighth-mile baggage road and that quarter-mile baggage road. The next criteria is that zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features. And again, to reiterate, the site is over the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer, so it may be considered a benefit to get properties onto city sewer versus having septic over the aquifer. The next criteria is that commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classification. So Highway 41 is a principal arterial and East 12th is a minor collector with a single-family residential zoning request. Staff has written in the staff report that it should not adversely impact the existing transportation network with that minor collector and the principal arterial having the capacity to serve those trips, vehicle trips per day. The next criteria is that limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the higher-intensity urban activity. This goes back to the slide John was showing with the commercial properties within that eighth-mile area along Highway 41, going to maybe a medium-density or medium-use within that quarter-mile, eight-mile to quarter-mile area. And then going into your lower-density, less-intensive-use areas, such as single-family homes. And you can see on the map that the Ashler Ranch property is located right in here, so just outside of that high-intensity urban activity area. The next criteria is that industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential zoning. This criteria is not applicable, as there's no industrial in the area. This is the proposed subdivision that was approved by Planning and Zoning, contingent upon annexation approval. So they are looking at 27 single-family lots with the north-south connection of Zorros Road here on the left side of the plan. And then an east-west connection that, of Davenport Drive, which in the future could connect to the east. But for now, provides fire and a loop through the subdivision. And then again, we would get those improvements on East 12th Avenue with the frontages. This is the list of agencies notified and given a chance to comment on the annexation. The Post Falls Police Department was neutral. Cootney County Fire and Rescue reserves comments for the permitting process. And Post Falls Highway District had no comments. And with that, I can take any questions you have.
Questions for Laura? If you know, thank you. The applicant wishes to speak. Name for record, please.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Jacobson, Jeremy Terzouli. I am project coordinator with Olson Engineering here on behalf of the development team for Ashler Ranch. Staff covered a lot of ground there, so I apologize for any repeats and redundancies. I'll try to adjust accordingly. So I felt that staff did a great job of outlining the zoning designation and the request for R1 zoning. We did go before Planning and Zoning Commission. I felt that that discussion was rather comprehensive and covered a lot of ground. And so I just sort of summarized what that discussion results were. And they are on this slide here. We believe that it was compatible with surrounding uses and the development patterns in the area, that sewer and water were readily available at the site, that all design standards in the R1 zoning designation can be met. We're not looking for any variances, any deviations from code. So all of those code requirements can be met or exceeded. We believed in that discussion that it was, although not every project is going to check every box in the comprehensive plan, that it showed a general level of consistency with the comprehensive plan. Some conditions of approval have been outlined, and those have been reviewed and accepted. And for the first time in my career, I believe we had unanimous support from citizens offering comment at the public hearing and write-in comments, all in support and no dissent. That was a first for me. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted to adopt the R1 zoning designation if annexed. And development annexation agreement has been produced by city attorney. It's been reviewed and signed on our end. So if annexation does occur, we in essence have agreed to all those terms of annexation in advance. So that's sort of a summary of the discussion that happened at Planning and Zoning. And again, staff did a great job of outlining that. So I will move to the discussion surrounding the annexation. And we take our direction from the annexation policy that's available on the city's website in the Planning Department's sub-page. And rather than read the whole thing, sort of the summary of the annexation policy is that annexation should indicate an orderly and logical expansion of the city, that it should offer a general improvement to efficiency and economic provisions of the infrastructure. In essence, is the annexation a net benefit to the city and its residents? And then directs, directs us to the comprehensive plan to go over the goals and policies to see if annexation would be appropriate for any given parcel. Comprehensive plan, goals and policies, these are all of the policies that discuss annexation and how the city might take some guidance from the comprehensive plan when making decisions to annex or not annex a property. The color coding is there to sort of outline or illustrate how I believe that these policies can kind of be categorized. Policy 9 in red sort of stands alone, encouraging the annexation of county islands within the city. And I know this is a huge priority for the city. And it has also been prioritized by the development community. I can tell you that development teams, real estate agents, people in general approach, a lot of people that have these county pockets within the city to see if annexation would be something that fits into their, to their plan. I can tell you personally, in the last two years, some people have come to me. I've heard about people through other people, and we've sat and met with a lot of these folks that do own these infill opportunities. We have very productive conversations. And they always tend to, it kind of comes down to, where am I going to go? What's my exit strategy? And so they get approached regularly. We talk through that, how that might happen. They recognize that it may be a great time for them to sell and offer up their property for redevelopment, at which time, the conversation always shifts to, but where will I go? And so those conversations tend to hit a stalemate there. So there are opportunities, they are being pursued, but they're a little tough to break loose. In green, those, I think, are sort of grouped in a way that those policies, 14, 46, and 47, tend to get worked out through the annexation agreements and through the procedures that the city has in place for things like the public hearing, making sure that we're addressing the area of city impact. And those all tend to work themselves out through those agreements. Which leaves us to the policies 33, 44, and 63, highlighted in yellow, which talk about timing, infrastructure, orderly growth, master transportation plans. And those all sort of coalesce in Policy 45. And those are all bullet pointed there. So when discussing those, water and sewer, those are available. We can meet the design standards and the request of the city to make sure that we're accommodating potential future growth to the north and east. Oh, water rights, this is in Ross Point Water District. And so those water rights and that, their boundaries are already identified. So that has worked itself out. Let's see, schools, police, and fire have all been notified. I know that discussion comes up a lot. I think that discussion needs to continue as we add additional people to the, the school districts. And we need additional police and fire. A lot of those things are covered through impact fees and the ability to expand those departments. What I would say about Ashler Ranch is the, the buyer profile in here, per the developer, is probably going to be young professionals at a, at a small percentage, retirees and those people moving in towards retirement ages. These are going to be larger lots, far exceeding the minimum lot requirement in the R1 designation. We're, we're calling them shop lots. They're going to be larger with the ability to have three-car garages and/or, or shops. So we're catering to a slightly different demographic. With regard to parks, the Parks Department doesn't offer a lot of guidance on non-incorporated area within the city. There is the Foxtail Park to the north. And there are the Fields at Real Life across the highway, which access could be had by pedestrians through the to-be-signalized 16th Street and 41. So parks are within range. But as this area develops out, I think we would, we would probably get some direction from the Parks Department where that park should be positioned. And it's probably going to sort of be centrally located in this area of growth. They still are allowed to collect those impact fees to foster and help the growth and the addition of parks in the future. So staff touched on this a lot. And this is, we've, we've covered this in great detail on our side. We sort of discussed and worked through this with, with the engineering department. What I will tell you is that our original design did not look like this. It was Rob Paulus from the city who kindly gave us a call and said, I think you might be overlooking the fact that in our master transportation plan, we have a quarter-mile baggage road at this location. So with his help and some assistance, we redesigned this. And then on this slide, right down there at the bottom of the screen, that's, that's our proposed subdivision. And the line in yellow represents that baggage road, which led to a 53-foot right-of-way dedication from this property owner. And why this is critical is because if the city, if the council decides to annex this one, decides to annex to the north, you're going to get that quarter-mile connection between 16th and 12th. 16th being proposed to be that fully signalized intersection as part of the master transportation plan and the Highway 41 corridor improvement plan. And then the area in orange indicates the four missing pieces to having that entire baggage road all the way from Crimson King. baggage road all the way from Crimson King, and ultimately that little chicane down to the commercial services where the car wash are and the multi-tenant retail buildings are. In essence, growth in this corner of town, if all those pieces are brought into play, will allow residents in this area to navigate the baggage roads and the connection roads at their will and funnel out onto 41 as they see fit. In addition, an additional 20 feet of right-of-way dedication on 12th, over 1,200 linear feet of city streets constructed with all the necessary infrastructure, multi-use paths, street-side swales, street trees. And this Highway 41 expansion was designed specifically to accommodate this anticipated future growth in this area. And again, the transportation plan is really well-designed. The city staff, KMPO, and their collaboration with ITD, I think it was, I know it was a direct attempt to try not to make the same mistakes that other cities had made in creating these frontage and baggage roads that parallel the major corridors throughout the city. With regard to timing, because I know this comes up a lot, I just kind of wanted to paint a little bit of a picture as to where we're at with the improvements to 41. I actually spoke with the project manager of the Highway 41 expansion this morning just to get a real-time update as to where things stand. He is in charge of the expansion from Mullen to Prairie. He did indicate that those signals are going to start getting energized and come online in the next one to two weeks. They'll then start to pave in the medians and the intersections, and then continue to pave in the side streets with substantial completion anticipated by October of this year. And I think that's critical as the construction on the interchange has started advanced by a year. By some stroke of divine intervention, I would guess, but I've never seen a state project get advanced a year. But there they are, they're breaking ground on that. I think it's critical to note that areas north of Mullen Ave, whether in the city now or proposing to be annexed into the city, will have that fully built-out, signalized section of roadway, and they'll be able to adjust accordingly. Part of the reason that that interchange is taking so long is that they're not allowed to have any lane restrictions on Interstate 90 during daytime hours. Any lane restrictions can only occur at nighttime. They have to maintain two westbound, two eastbound lanes at all times during the day. Any deviations or traffic diversions, lane restrictions that will occur on the surface streets will be noticed well in advance, and now people to the north will have options to navigate that. So in conjunction with what staff had already pointed out, he also indicated that that interchange is anticipated to be complete late 2025, early 2026. And I've sort of outlined what we think our general timeline will be for this proposal, and I would guess that as more proposals might come on Highway 41, that their timelines are probably going to be about the same. I think it, I think most people got it, but just to reiterate, an approval of a project does not mean we're going to mobilize equipment out there and start scratching the dirt tomorrow. We have to go through full-blown construction plans, we've got to get them into the city, we've got to go through plan review. We would anticipate approved subdivision plans sometime in the spring of 2023 with construction on the subdivision to begin spring or summer. Building permits to be issued somewhere in the fall of 2023, getting some of those homes dried in before winter, with the first set of COs coming out in summer of 2024. Full build out of the subdivision somewhere in that 2025, 2026.
And your time is up.
And my time is up. Any questions?
Questions for the board? That was timed as good as I've ever seen.
Well, I had three bullet points to tie it all together, but I kind of, yeah, it was, thank you.
You bet, thank you. Anyone wishing to testify? I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I had filled out one of the comment cards, I wanted to speak, I don't know.
Okay, name?
Gary Idema.
Okay, thank you. Wishing to speak in favor, Jeremy Bowler. And I should ask everybody, when you're speaking, name for the record, and then just keep your eye on the clock for us, please. See if you can time it as well as he did.
Yeah, right. Jeremy Bowler, 3844 North Pasture View here in Post Falls. Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council, thanks for the opportunity to hear the project tonight. I'm a member of the ownership entity on the project, and then I'll also be the builder in the project. So I just wanted to come and provide an opportunity of any questions as to the type of housing we're going to be building there, that we're proposing on building there. I've been building in Post Falls for quite a long time. My company is called Anthem Pacific Homes, supporter in the community, and we've done several projects similar to the one that you're seeing tonight in terms of fit and finish and quality, lot size. We believe in a larger, nicer lot with features and standards that are a little bit upgraded from what you'd consider standard in the marketplace. So I just wanted to make myself available for any questions on the housing type that might be available in the neighborhood.
Is it appropriate to ask questions of Councilors? Council, anybody have questions? Don't see any.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Wishing to speak in favor, Ann Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Ann Hayes. My husband and our family, we live on the property that is directly bordering the east side of the proposed development, and we are in favor of this development. We were here a few years back when somebody tried to get it zoned R3, and we pushed very hard at the time, thinking R1 was appropriate. There are only two concerns I think that we have. One is, well, Devon Drive is going right in the back of our property. I'm not sure what that's going to look like, but we don't really like the idea of a street dead-ending or something on our property, but I'm sure we'll work something out. We also, it's nice to hear the reassurance from Anthem Pacific. When, and it's a question really, is when you annex and zone, I know that that is set, but I was wondering if the plot map, the 27 plots in the streets were also approved or whether that's something for later. You know, we do like the density here. It's very similar to Crimson King in terms of how dense it is, and we think that's an appropriate thing, and we would not like to see it get more dense. You know, once you do this, you know, we don't know how much it can change, you know, all of a sudden, you know, we just don't, and that's just pure ignorance on my part, whether that's something that can happen or whether what we're looking at is really what we're going to get. So I do appreciate the reassurance from the builder. The only other thing that concerns us, and I did see the road plan, but as I understand it, the plan for the road to go straight, it would actually go through the property that is part of the mobile home park. It will not go through Bel Cielo, which is a catty-corner property. And so, given that, we are a little concerned, myself and talking with other residents on Maverick Lane. Maverick Lane is a county road, it is public access, but it's a single-lane dirt road, privately maintained. We plow it. My husband and I pay, for example, for dust control, and we just, it would be nice to have some reassurances that, you know, it won't be seen as another outlet for, you know, a bunch of new homeowners in the area, especially as I say, we're privately maintaining it, and it really can't handle a lot. A postman, for example, can't even go there in the winter because of ice, and then we've also had trouble sometimes with the garbage man. So just curious about how that will be addressed and whether we will have any reassurances on not having to privately maintain a road for a lot more residents than the few who live there on our five-acre plots. Those are really our main concerns, but I just wanted to express those to you and see if there's something, you know, in this whole process where you will address that or consider it in your approval process. Thank you.
Is that something we could have staff visit with her on?
Yeah, I think staff can catch her afterwards. I can speak quickly to the subdivision approval. So the subdivision was approved by the Planning Commission contingent upon annexation. So if the property is annexed, that approval is in place. Generically, you're not going to see increased lot counts without that going back through a publicly noticed hearing process that's locked in. You can make minor amendments without that happening, but if you're going to increase the lot count, that's going to be another noticed hearing with the opportunity to come in and comment.
And then how about on the road? Is that something that...
I would send that to somebody else other than me.
Okay, who would be the one, Rob?
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. In terms of the question as to what was going to be happening with, there's two road questions, one on Maverick Lane going on to the publicly, public right-of-way that's not accepted for public maintenance. We would treat that as we've done similar roads in town where we would put a sign at that location, and in this case, unless there was a need from emergency services being Cootney Fire and Rescue, we would blockade that off. Right now, that section of roadway does have a little bit of blockades by it, people drive around it, and it's more or less down on the 12th Avenue side, it's a very thin dirt road, and it's not an area we would encourage public traffic to go to. There was also the comment made about the catty-corner piece for the quarter-mile baggage road. That is correct. In order to complete that baggage road all the ways up to 16th Avenue, one, you'd need to annex the piece further to the north, and then there would need to be some negotiation or acquisition or the annexation of the mobile home park in order to get that missing little wedge piece in that catty corner. We do know that the owners of the mobile home park to date have not been interested in working with people in the area as far as getting that right-of-way secured for the roadway or sanitary sewer. Any further questions at this time?
I think so. I think you addressed a couple of those, so it sounds like that private road would be somewhat protected or would be protected. Good, thank you. And final person wishing to speak, and is Gary, Gary is it Idema?
Yeah, Gary Idema.
And he's wishing to speak neutral.
Yeah, is there no way to get that map back up of Maverick Lane and the 12th?
And just name for the record on the microphone for Gary.
My name's Gary Idema.
Thank you.
Live on 1485 Maverick Lane. Thanks, Mayor, Council Board for seeing me. Well, I was going to kind of point it out right...
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we need you to speak into the mic. We have to create a recorded...
Oh, I got it right there.
...transcript, yeah, thank you.
Well, the main question I have is what is the plan for the end of 12th Street where it turns into the Maverick Lane?
Sorry, not sure which one you wanted.
Bigger one, I don't know if I can point top at the same time. I'm not, I'm not prepared, but, no, that was the one back there, you know? I don't know if I can point on that thing?
You can just use a mouse to move the...
Oh, okay. So looking at, you know, this is this projected annexed piece of property here, this Maverick Lane here coming off of 16th through here, this is just the equivalent of almost a two-track road. It's unmaintained, this corner right here is really, it's a hairpin, single-lane corner, and then this Maverick Lane used to not extend down to 12th. I've been living there about 12 years, one of the residents actually pushed that through. So Maverick Lane used to end at the last house on the left. So that extension that's there now, which is equivalent, like you said, a two-track, you know, just a bush road, that was illegally put through there. So what are the plans exactly at the end of that subdivision there on the, that property line right, it'd be right there, that property line? I've thought a lot about this already, save you guys some work. What I think's the best solution is to actually put a barricade there and a turnaround in an actual dead end. The idea of putting signs and stuff, that don't work.
Yeah, and I just, I got confirmation from Mr. Paulus, so they put signs, but he said they would put barricades as well.
Yeah, if that's closed, I think the problem as far as I'm concerned is addressed, you know, that we're not going to have all that heavy urban density traffic trying to come down that two-lane, you know, two-track bush road.
Yeah, they'll do what they need to do to try to dissuade traffic from going on that privately maintained, small road.
So is there going to be a physical barrier?
I think it all depends, Rob. Would there be physical barriers or just depending on the situation at the time?
Physical barrier.
You know what I'm saying.
Yeah, so yes, physical barriers unless there was some need that emergency services identified, but as has been identified by a couple of individuals, and I have driven that myself, it is a very thin road, farm, farm-field road is almost what it is. And so until such time as there's development beyond, if this property's developed, there really shouldn't be a road there, and you shouldn't be encouraging public...
So it would preclude the people from the new houses from going on that road?
And I think that's the perfect scenario right there.
Joe, where would they be going?
Well, if you come today to where the road ends, which is right about there, you can drive down Maverick Lane, make that 90-degree bend, and go all the ways up to 16th Avenue.
To then what, turn left and go back to 41?
Turn left to 41 or right out to Meyer and then head north.
Oh, that's connected to Meyer, you're right.
Accident and repair through there.
Gotcha. I see it now, thank you.
With the improvements to Highway 41, I would hope that that would be a less desirable route. Getting onto Highway 41 will be easier at 12th Avenue. With the Highway 41 interchange project, getting onto Highway 41 at Mullen Avenue will become better as well.
Thanks, Rob. It's all the public testimony, does the advocate wish to rebut?
Yeah, so as Mr. Paulus pointed out, that is, with the improvements to 41, that that is likely a less desirable route. Having traveled that road multiple times, I can assure you it's a much less desirable route. To leave this subdivision, travel the quarter-mile to the three-quarter intersection at 41, head north, have a dedicated or an easy-turn lane on 16th to head east, to hit points east, Meyer Road, wherever you're going, would be far more efficient than traveling 10, eight to 10 miles an hour on Maverick Lane, having your rig scratched up by brush and hitting potholes because it is a glorified goat trail there. It really is. So, yeah, I think that 27 potential residents in here would likely take the path of least resistance, which is going to be west, north, and then back east. And Rob also pointed out, as far as barricading it, you know, so we're going to create the road section that the city wants to the eastern boundary, and then there will be a terminus. I know that the fire department tends to weigh in and need multiple points of ingress egress for emergency services, so they're going to be a part of that discussion as well. We'll try to accommodate residents of Maverick Lane to the best of our ability, but fire, rescue, police, and other agencies will weigh in in that design process. But I can tell you, having traveled Maverick Lane, I don't see people using that as an alternate route if they have very little resistance to go out to 41 and head back east.
Excuse me, yeah, can't comment, excuse me, thank you.
With regard to the internal road, that terminus, that design tends to be driven by city staff for future connectivity to potential growth to the east. If that road wasn't there, we would likely get another lot, but city staff and city standards do sort of drive that road being there. As far as the homeowner's concerned, yep, that's in their backfield. People aren't going to drive off of that road and into the backfield and think that that's a playground. It, you know, fencing could be put there, all that sort of stuff, because that is not meant for current connectivity, that's designed for future connectivity if the property to the east designs out. But that is driven by city staff and their design standards. But that is driven by city staff and their design standards. With regard to the baggage road, that is kind of the conundrum that can happen sometimes. You don't always get all active participants. What I do know is that city staff directed us to design a subdivision to allow for ultimately what's about 80 to 85 percent of that road section on this property with the hope that at some point the rest of the road section will get built out, but they can accommodate an appropriate baggage road. What's lost by only getting 53 feet and not the full 65 feet is a full sidewalk on that side and the full stormwater swale with street trees. They would put that additional 12 to 15 feet if that property to the west does come into the city and get developed out. We would offer temporary stormwater remediation on that side and the road section itself will not be lesser. And then if the project to the north gets annexed in, that becomes that next piece in that full quarter mile section of that quarter mile baggage road. What I can tell you is the trailer court right now, that northeast corner is completely unimproved. It's just grass. They just park campers and trailers and stuff up there. I think we'd have to defer to the attorneys on this, but if both properties come in, if those right of ways are acquired and there could be a ability to grab that piece of property through eminent domain to the benefit of the city, I can say that there are no improvements on that quarter of the property right now and a design could certainly accommodate a slight chicane in the road to connect those two pieces. I believe that was all the comments. Yeah, I believe that's all the comment at this time unless there are any additional questions, concerns.
See none. See none.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. So the first question is annexation.
Mm-hmm.
Counsel. We've gone through all the steps in the past from the last meeting and discussed it, but the first thing we need to do is determine if counsel is interested in annexing this piece of property.
Are there the stock questions for that or not?
No, that's just the first question. Then we go through the individuals. Because if you're not interested in annexing it, we don't need to look at these questions. If you think annexation makes sense, then we'll go dig into the zoning and that.
Annexation certainly could make sense at this area.
I agree.
Yep, I agree.
I agree.
I agree with that, okay. So that being the case, now we go into the individual criteria.
Just for the folks who are sitting here wondering what we're doing.
So are we.
So this is a little bit of a weird process that state law gives us. The decision to annex property is a legislative decision that you don't have to have standards for. You can just do what generically, what you think is in the city's best interest. There's some things that can get you in trouble, but generically, it's, you can do what you think is in the city's best interest.
And if the council was not interested in annexing it, the discussion would end right there.
The zoning discussion, the state law tells us we have to have adopted criteria and those are the only criteria we can consider and so we work through those, through those criteria. So that's kind of what we're working through.
Right.
All right, so the first question is on the review criteria for the zoning is, is the requested zoning consistent with the future land use mapping for the site?
Yes.
Yes, it's transitional R1 that's...
And is consistent with the transportation master plan and several other master plans.
It's specified in the, in the information for the focus area.
Right.
As Mr. Wilson writes furiously.
Furiously. Consideration two, is it consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Specifically that it provides housing types that are in need, connectivity, particularly the baggage roads. How many, how many bullet points do you need?
That's sufficient.
I'll stop there.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, number three?
Item three, zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, which you've spoken to with the future land use map, community plans and geographic or natural features.
Offer some commentary on this one. The, my usual commentary on everything near Highway 41 has been the same for years now is that the, there's a lot of approved building that hasn't been fully built out yet. Highway 41 still isn't done, although it's finally close down to 12th Avenue. But then we've got the interchange, I-90, Celta's, Highway 41, that is still three to four years off. So putting any additional traffic on that whole corridor gives me pause. In this case, it is large lot R1, although nothing is set in stone until the homes are built, so. But even with the, say the developer now sells it off tomorrow to somebody else who wants to try to cram more units in there, with all the right of ways for the baggage road, 12th Avenue, interior roads, et cetera, there's really no way that anybody could get more than 35-ish lots on that piece of property and maintain R1. So the transportation benefit is that we get a city block worth of baggage road, which not immediately, but eventually will take pressure off of Highway 41. And the potential cost is an extra 270-ish trips potentially before the interchange is done. I think in that case, the benefit outweighs the cost because of the lower density. We get more of a benefit to transportation than a detriment, even if the whole thing's built out before the interchange is done.
Additional comment?
I think we get aquifer protection out of it by having the sewer system there. The baggage roads, of course, are a big plus at this point. Just start, not going to get us there in the end, but it's a good start. There are alternatives from here to get down to Mullen Avenue to get across, so.
Okay.
The next one is probably not applicable. This deals with commercial and high-density residential and that's not what's on offer tonight. So the next one that would be relevant would be limited or neighborhood commercial or lower-density residential is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from high-intensity activity.
And that's what this was doing if you look at, they say potentially you've got, well, you've got the multifamily if it's, it's in the county, but consider multifamily when it's a trailer park to the west. So as you transition further to the east away from that, you get into the larger, single-family lots.
I like that it's consistent with Crimson King, you know, right around kitty corner from there. It's very nice.
I also like that it locks it in at a lower density.
Well, it provides, you talk about different housing needs and that. I know housing prices are awful right now, but, you know, provides if it's a shop lot, it might provide that step up for those who are in what used to be considered a starter home. Now they're just considered expensive. But, you know, folks looking to move up, it provides a product for them as well, so I think that's a benefit.
Seeing nothing more. The last one is for industrial zoning, which is again largely irrelevant to this request. So that is all of the criterias.
We would need a motion.
Yeah, a motion would be to either approve or deny the annexation with the requested R1 zoning and direct staff to prepare a reasoned decision to bring it back for your adoption.
I would move to approve the Ashler Ranch annexation file, number ANNX-4-2022, with the R1 zoning designation and have staff prepare the final ordinance for annexation.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Forson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Locker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Joe?
Bassett, thank you. Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break real quick.
Call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is another public hearing, Belsiello III annexation. And with that, I will open the public hearing.
All right. Good evening again, Mayor Jacobson and City Council members. Laura Jones, Associate Planner with the City of Post Falls, introducing to you the Belsiello III annexation. The property owner is Belsiello III LLC, and Lake City Engineering is the applicant. The applicant's request tonight is annexation approval with the zoning designation of high-density residential R3 on approximately five acres. The property is located east of Highway 41 and south of East 16th Avenue, as indicated on the vicinity map in red. The site is currently developed with a single-family residence, which is situated over the Rathburn Prairie Aquifer. Ross Point is the water purveyor, and the City of Post Falls will provide wastewater reclamation services. Looking at the surrounding zoning, to the north and to the... Let me get my eyes on it, sorry. Well, to the north is Cootney County, single-family, large lots. To the east and south are multifamily within Cootney County, and those are mobile home parks. And to the west is Belsiello, prior additions of multifamily development. And then to the southwest, for orientation, is Ashler Annexation, right here, which is what we just heard previous, in the previous public hearing. And again, with this annexation request, John is going to go over the potential benefits and concerns with this annexation.
Yes, I'm going to skip over some of the stuff that's repeated from the previous hearing, but looking at the proposal being the R3 with the annexation, getting additional multifamily zoning would help address the 1% vacancy rate, or approximate 1% vacancy we have for that housing sector. Compared to single-family residents, it does address the ability to create housing for residents of all ages, just looking at just the fiscal nature of a single-family home in the $420,000 to $500,000 at the starter. It's just impractical for a lot of individuals at certain younger ages to move into versus older individuals who have equity either local or from outside the area can transition into that single-family. We do have, and I want to acknowledge, for multifamily, versus some of the multifamily projects in the past, we've improved our multifamily design standards. It's not applicable really in this case. We do have increased setbacks. We do have open space requirements at Wood, so unlike other previous ones, we didn't have open space. We now require 150 square feet of open space for each one-bedroom. Anything two-bedrooms or greater, they do provide 300 square foot per unit. We've already kind of gone over the first two items there. Once again, by getting annexations, we do get the road improvements, the adjacent road improvements, the pedestrian connections. This does tie into the, potentially can tie into that baggage road that was mentioned in the previous hearing. Again, the sewer master plan, the new plan, does call for that span between 12th and 16th to provide that kind of an important sewer connection to allow that right-of-way along 16th Avenue to connect further to the east and allow the basin further to the east to drain this direction. Kind of went over this a little bit. I do want to highlight, though, on this aspect of it, a few things that weren't really discussed. Zorros, more than likely, will be serving as a breakage or a gap between single-family homes in the east and the multifamily or medium-density. Chances of medium-density, slimmer, now that we have addressed another issue, is removing multifamily out of the R2 makes it less likely someone asking for an R2 to do multifamily. They may do a different zone, like residential mixed, or a different zoning district to get to that same medium-density. Also, I did highlight where we do plan to have full interchanges along Highway 41 at those increments. So, what this was based on was looking at what occurred to the east, and generally what market forces call upon, is when you're, call upon, is when you're along a commercial corridor. Landowners don't like giving up prime commercial land for inferior land use, in this case would be multifamily. Sometimes you do see multifamily spillover. But generally, this is kind of what I highlighted, what we've seen occur over at the Tolomar. We've seen the commercial, I've highlighted in orange, those are multifamily sites. In green, those are parks. You do have the lower-density single-family there in yellow. And then Charville and Cecil serve the same quarter-mile, half-mile baggage road that you see and was being planned for along the east side of Highway 41. All of this culminates to the background growth that KMPO used in their growth projections. They tasked the city, where do you see growth going in the future? Well, well, what has occurred? What are the market forces? We throw in colors, we throw in density, and then we can kind of figure out, generally speaking, if it's built out, where individuals would more than likely go, path of least I do highlight here, services and infrastructure is needed at this point in time to serve this whole area if it was to ever come in. Same similar concerns as the previous one, you know, timing with the interchange on Highway 41. Once again, I want to reiterate, concerns depending on occupancy, those can be mitigated and tasked within that development agreement, if so be. Adequate parks, kind of went over that, but I would like to reiterate that with multifamily, we do have the open space requirements. And then as we see completion of these larger lands that can capitalize on connected sewer and roads, they will be able to provide more of those regional parks with some of those larger, future annexation proposals. Impacts of schools, I probably should have on there impacted schools, fire, police, and have that in one. We generally get comments letter from all three of them, whether they're for neutral and against, which Laura will go over. Parking in particular does come up with multifamily developments and the impacts it makes on the adjoining road infrastructure. This is one where you do see that transitional issues more than likely do occur. They're in the middle of construction, you have construction workers on-site, they may bring on a phase closer to the road. Individuals may use the public-provided parking that was created on the street to go with the multifamily. Generally speaking, like up in Tolomar, there was admittedly some congestion for a period of time here lately. I've gone up and down Charville, I don't, I do see cars parked on the street, but the appropriate fire lanes are still being provided. So, the roads are designed to provide parking, a lot of times on both sides, with the emergency services still being able to go both directions. Again, just stating that a lot of this is embedded in the focus area. Thematically, when you just read the overtones of these focus areas and you didn't read the goals and policies, they tie into these big themes that are tied into these focus areas, of which you do have in your packet, a big booklet of all the focus areas. Any questions for staff?
Questions to John?
Pertain to the annexation aspect, and maybe the 41 or the interchange?
See none.
Okay.
Okay, going into the zone change review criteria, the first is that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map. Even though Ashler, excuse me, Ashler Ranch and Belsiello are basically just kitty-corner to each other, they fall into two different categories. Ashler Ranch was in transitional, this is in the business commercial, which promotes a mixture of moderate, high-density housing types within walking distance of the city center, neighborhood center, and corridor commercial uses, as well as civic uses and other amenities within Post Falls. And R3 is one of the implementing zoning districts. But again, we'll look at the focus area also for further guidance on development, which again, just one lot over. Ashler was in the East Prairie focus area, this is in the 41 North focus area. And as the comprehensive plan points out, as with North Prairie, land values will pressure development to attract a range of residents, offering shared amenities, housing variety, and neighborhood-scale services. And development should focus provisions for multifamily, commercial, and tech uses near higher-classified roadways. Looking at criteria B, amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the goals and policies found in the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan. Again, Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed these goals to make their recommendation on zoning that was forwarded to you. Goal 5, 6, 7, and 14 include keeping Post Falls neighborhoods safe, vital, and attractive; maintain and improve Post Falls transportation network on pace and in concert with need and plan objectives; plan for and establish types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls, supporting community needs and the city's long-term sustainability; and involving the community of Post Falls in all local government planning and decision-making. Again, Policy 1 and 2, we go over with every annexation, and we review things such as level of service, fiscal health of the community, residential quality of life, and compatible, well-designed development, which John touched on again, through several of those benefits and concerns that he outlined. And in Policy 2, the future land use map, compatibility with surrounding land uses, infrastructure and service plans, and existing and future traffic patterns, which we've talked about already, the future land use map and the surrounding land uses. Going into the infrastructure, Post Falls will provide water reclamation services and has the capacity and willingness to serve the site. And Ross Point also has the willingness and capacity to serve the site, and the applicant did provide a will-serve letter from Ross Point Water District. Policy 15 is to ensure that adequate land is available for future housing needs, helping serve residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities through provision of diverse housing types and price levels. That's displayed very well and apparent in both of our hearings tonight, with the two opposing densities being asked for. Policy 24 is to plan for and protect transportation corridors from encroachment and preserve adequate rights of way for future corridors, including utility facilities. Again, just to reiterate, this includes our eighth-mile baggage road and the quarter-mile baggage road of Zorros, giving us two other north-south connectivity options. Criteria C is that zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic and natural features. As we go over every time, most of our city is situated over the Rathburn Prairie Aquifer, and potentially having these residential units hooked to city sewer versus a septic system could be beneficial. Criteria D is that commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classification. Again, Highway 41 is a principal arterial, 16th Street is a major collector, and in the staff report, the engineering department outlined that with the vehicle trips per day, this should not adversely impact the existing transportation network. Criteria E, limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from the higher-intensity urban activity. This is not applicable. And criteria F is not applicable. Industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential zoning. This is the list of agencies that were notified and given a chance to comment on the annexation request. Post Falls Police Department was neutral, however, they did ask us to keep in mind the complaints regarding parking during the design approval process. This is in reference to the area adjacent to Silo, just, excuse me, just south of Silo. There had been complaints of just congestion and on-street parking. And if there's questions on that, Rob probably can answer those for you. With Cootney County Fire and Rescue, they're reserving comments for the permitting process, and Post Falls Highway District had no comments. And with that, I can take questions, or if you do have questions regarding that parking, I can...
Questions for Laura, or Rob? See none? Thank you. Applicant.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council members. Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, for the record, 126 East Poplar Avenue, City of Coeur d'Alene. Yes, that is the wrong date that's on there. I brought, I brought this to City Council, September 19th, 2019. Couple of new faces, I do recognize that. But, most of you or some of you have seen this annexation request before. I actually went back today and watched that transcript, it's on the city website, of what transpired there, just so I could get a better feel for it. So, in that regards, this is actually the presentation that I brought forward last time, so I, nothing has really changed since then, so I figured I'd bring the same presentation forward. I did watch the, that hearing again. There really wasn't opposition from council to the annexation or the zoning at the time. The big concern was the timing. And if you guys remember, that was actually before the Highway 41 project had started. It was slated to start within a few months of that date. There was uncertainty, we knew there was going to be a traffic signal at 16th and Highway 41. Nobody knew the timing of when that was going to be active versus the timing of the annexation. We actually talked in those extensive conversations with Warren about, well, can we come back in six months? Can we come back in a year? Can we condition it through a development agreement? We talked about all of that in that hearing. Ultimately, it was denied, but we took that as denied meaning come back when Highway 41 is done. So, we didn't wait the six months, we waited the three years. Highway 41, I don't want to say is done, but the 16th signal is supposed to be online this Friday. Hopefully, that's the plan. Paving's supposed to be scheduled, the remainder of the paving for September 1st wrapped up in October of this year, I think that was discussed in the previous hearing. So, we are there. Highway 41 is in effect, done. So, we are bringing this annexation request back to you guys. We are asking for R3. We did go through P&amp;Z again and did get a unanimous recommendation from P&amp;Z for that R3 zoning designation. Again, during that previous hearing, there were comments that council felt this was a good area for multifamily, it did fit, it did meet the comp plan, the big concern at the time was the timing. Again, so you can see here, this is, we're calling it Belsiello III, it's this property in red. These other two properties next door are the first two phases of the Belsiello project, they are apartments owned by the same developer. This would be anticipated to be a continuation of those apartments, that's why we're calling it Belsiello III. Here's the surrounding zoning. Again, the Belsiello property highlighted in red, you can see to the west there is R3, to the northwest is R3. You've got the mobile home park to the south and to the east, which is county property, but it is zoned high-density residential in the county. So, the R3 zoning designation actually fits, it's surrounded by high-density zoned property, so it is a good fit from that standpoint. These are your zoning criteria, staff went through them, I'm not going to go through them, you guys are going to discuss them during your deliberations, but I put them in the presentation anyways. You know, there's again the zoning criteria. From an annexation standpoint, it's really, is it a good fit for the city? And we think it is, it's surrounded by R3, it's a continuation of an existing project, same developer, it's a good fit. 16th Street's a major collector, you've got Highway 41, principal arterial, those streets are designed to handle higher volumes of traffic, and yes, a multifamily project will generate more traffic than Ashler Ranch, which is single-family to the south, but we are up against 16th Street. We do have the signal at 16th Street, which helps alleviate a lot of those concerns. Staff did write in the staff report that they didn't anticipate any traffic concerns as a result of this project. So, I think with that, I'm going to answer any questions that you have, I'm sure you have some questions for me.
Any questions from Mr. Ditman, at this point?
No?
See none?
I'll wait for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon. Wishing to speak neutral, Samantha Stigleader. I always have to ask you, did I say that right? Okay.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council, Samantha Stigleader, Nob Creek. I think the annexation is fine. I put neutral because I don't really think that there's any way that I can, like, argue for you to say no to this proposition, but I would like to take this opportunity to encourage council, to encourage developers, to do some more R2. We heard a lot of statistics about R1, and we talk a lot about R3 and the difference between those two. And then we get developers saying that they want to give a lot of opportunity to different types of people to live in Post Falls, and this and that. But, like, we have really good opportunities to ask them to build something else, and I think that this would be a great place to build some R2, and then as it moves away from 41, we're going to get into the R1, which, right, it's catty-corner too. So, I mean, I think that's mostly, like, what I have to say about it, just advocating for medium-density there, maybe a, I don't, I guess I don't really understand all of the variations of R2, but maybe a higher medium-density if they would like, but that that could go there. And then we could not just have people renting apartments, but we could have them actually buying homes, and maybe they're not the regular R1 homes, but they're like the twin homes, I think, right? So then, they can be building equity and doing something with their money that is helpful for them in the long term, and truly is a starter home, instead of encouraging apartments, which are good, but we don't really want to encourage families to start off their financial futures in there, or be there for a long time, like, let's give them more options. So, with this particular property, and I think that this was also my comment in P&amp;Z, not two years ago, but actually, like, when this went a few weeks ago, that this would be a great place for R2. And then, to this, having come to council two years ago, how much has changed in the City of Post Falls? Like, how many other R3s do we already have? So maybe it's actually not the greatest thing for us, if we already have a lot of R3 two years later. And then I do have one other question about goal number five, which is cited in almost every single staff report, it's safe, vital, and attractive. For one, I don't really understand what a vital development is, unless it's like a hospital or a police station or something, right? Like, vital, like breath. But, to say that something is going to be safe, like, I think that we either need to demonstrate that it's going to be safer than what it currently is, which means that we need to demonstrate that it was unsafe in its present state, which I don't think that we ever do, or that this is going to create some additional safety, which I don't think we ever do. And then, we can't really say that it's going to be attractive, because we're not told what it's going to look like at the time that we use that goal. So, sorry, that's just my own issue with goal number five and the language therein. So, okay, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. This next one is the first. Cheryl Danner wishes to speak, she's in favor and opposition and neutral. With a smiley face, I've got a smile. Come up and name for the record, please.
Hi, Council, my name is Cheryl Danner, and we live directly across from the new Barcello. We are just catty-ops. So, my concern, because we've already been through, so, do you understand where I'm at? Is this right here?
Yep, use that.
For, you know, I have to be, we're right here. Okay? Whoops.
We got it.
We were right there.
We got you.
Anyway, my concern is that the company has done an awesome job of building the 200-plus apartments that they already have. They have a dog run in Barcello 2. They have, my concern is that they have not provided any place for children to play. Okay? Not that it needs to be a park, but a... Not that it needs to be a park, but a place for children to play. As a grandmother of five, I would be very unhappy if I saw my grandchildren there. I have taken ours over there, and we have played in the swells, and they love it, but there's really no, per se, place that they can safely go. But there is a safe place for dogs. I'm a little concerned. And I'm a dog lover too, I have two of them. We have five acres, it's fenced in, not that ours get out. The other thing is, is that, the parking issue. If anyone is on 16th, we understand that the apartments, I've lived in apartments for many years, not the last 35, but normally apartments allow for two cars. And I know that these apartments sometimes can house three people, or three or more people. So where is that third person supposed to park? There's only X amount of parking that you can put on 16th between the front two. When the plows have come through, I have seen cars buried in the snow, because there's no place to go. So I'm not quite sure how we will ever get that taken care of. But knowing that we are going to be directly across from them, I'm a little concerned about the traffic and the street parking. And I think if any of you lived across from the development, you might understand a little more clearly. Not that that development is poorly developed, it's wonderfully, we've gone through multiple before they were developed, into all of them, the single, the single bedrooms, the double bedrooms, they're awesome apartments. I would also like to see more, what are they called in the front? Where they're like, well, yeah.
Orchards?
No, well, no, the develop, the homes, they're like duplexes. Do you know what I'm saying now?
Townhomes?
Yes, they look like townhomes in the front. I would love to see more townhomes in the front versus the high-end three-story, you know, but that's, other than that, that's all. And the safety of that, and the parks for the kids, and there was one other thing, but I can't, what was it?
Safety playground and parking.
I did it, there you go. So, yes, I'm for it, I, I mean, I'm for all three of them, but it's just unfortunate, and I do believe that we have plenty of apartments, but knowing that the economy is taking a downhill, people are not going to be able to afford their $3,000 homes, but the apartments aren't that much cheaper.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Wishing to speak in opposition, Ann Hayes.
Again, my name is Ann Hayes, live on Maverick Lane. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I want to mention one thing, I was here at the hearing three years ago, I opposed this then, and it is true that one of the main complaints was that 41, especially there was no light at 16th, could not handle people trying to turn on 16th, it's a death trap, and now, of course, there's a light. But some things have changed. I also want to mention, I believe, part of the comments at the time was this question of how much rental housing is there in Post Falls? There is a lot of rental housing, a lot has been approved, a lot is being built. Just up on Pole Line, that Bluegrass Development has over, has about 500 units under development, and I know that the City Council and the city should be concerned about affordable housing. I called Bluegrass, and the highest rent on their three bedrooms is, will be about $3,000. I don't call that affordable housing. And anybody who's renting at that level will never be able to afford to buy a house, and I agree that we should be aiming at getting people invested in this community. We have new rental housing, new apartments, huge development over, I guess it's 4th Street, 3rd Street, and Celts. We have the one right across, of course, on Celts, right where that, that card gas station is, there's a huge development over there. So things have changed, we have a lot of rental housing, and I think it's not conducive, or the best type of housing, conducive to a good community where people have ownership, they have investment, and also just crowding. You know, with that Bluegrass, they will be using 41, and yes, we are, you know, in a few months, we're all looking forward to the fact that 41 will be improved, we're all looking forward to the fact that the I-95, 41 interchange in about a few years will be, hopefully, that question is resolved, but I am concerned that we're already dumping so much traffic onto the new 41, and we don't even know what the impact is on that much more traffic, especially, especially with the lights now at Pole Line, 16th, Mullen, and then there'll be this, the spooey light. It gets backed up with that much traffic, and, and let's face it, all of that housing, new housing along 41 is being funneled into this one direction. And as somebody who goes out frequently and not looking forward to the development, it's going to be hard getting in and out, and I, and I am concerned. Belsiello 1 and Belsiello 2 already put about 170 apartments in, we're, I don't know what the number is, I'm guessing another 80 to 90 apartments. That's a lot of traffic to be put right onto 16th, right there at the light, and it'll, it will have impacts. Yes, we have a light now, but we're going to be backing up, that's going to be, mean that 41 is stopped more often while people from 16th feed on. So, those are my main concerns. I do think we have enough, if not too much, rental housing in Post Falls, and I would like to see us understand, get 41 opened, finish the development that we already have, and see how it's going to be impacted before we approve another 90 houses going on in this close to the new interchange and, and with all the other development going on. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Wishing to speak in opposition, Bob Flowers.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Well, we're back at this same subject in this same place again, and everybody keeps saying, 41's almost done, 41's almost done. Well, I'll tell you what, I've traveled it multiple times in just the last couple days, and if that's done, we're in trouble. But, as far as these apartments are concerned, up in there, I would agree with the lady that just spoke. There has been so much approved, we have, at this point, over 1,200 more apartments that are, haven't even been built yet, that have already been approved. To approve another whole batch of them without letting 41 get finished and all the development that's already been approved to get online and see how these things, how everything flows is crazy. It just doesn't make any sense to approve another huge batch of apartments right off of 41 before, because I don't care how well it's engineered, how many people have looked at it. Every project has problems, and you don't, you can't address those problems until the project's completed, and you can actually see if all your numbers actually do match. Right now, we don't know, there's too many unknowns. And why not let the commercial, the projects that have already been approved through there come online and see what's going to happen? Because we have more than enough apartments already approved, once they get built out. This one section here, that close to 41, just doesn't need to happen today. It could, you know, they can bring it back again in another year or two, once we actually see if what we built there will work. It's, it just doesn't make any sense to approve more apartments along there. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant wished to rebut.
Thank you, Mayor Jacobson, Council, again Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, for the record. I took notes, I'll try to answer questions best I can, if I miss something, just let me know. R3, again, is an implementing zoning district per the future land use map designation of business commercial, so R3 designation is allowed. Actually, R1 would not even be allowed in this because of that business commercial designation, so important to point that out. Yes, there are a lot of apartment projects in Post Falls, but as John had indicated earlier, we still have a less than 1% to 2% vacancy rate of apartments, and that's not even a vacancy rate, that's turnover. That's somebody moving out, apartment sits vacant for a month while they clean it, the next guy moves in. So, in my opinion, and I see this a lot, vacancy is pretty much zero in apartments right now. So, there is a need, there is a demand for it, obviously that's why we're here tonight talking about it. Safety and the kids playground was brought up, and again, as John had indicated, the city does now have new multifamily standards, which do require open space, they do require a certain amount of amenities based on number of units. That was not in effect when Belsiello 1 and 2 were designed, so when this is brought forward and we go through site development with staff, we will have to provide those kinds of amenities as they're required by the code now. So you will see an upgraded, improved project from what you've seen in the past. Parking, parking is an issue, and this was discussed substantially at the P&amp;Z meeting about parking on 16th. Parking is allowed by city code on 16th Street, that street was designed to have on-street parking on it. Is it crowded? Absolutely it is. I think it was exacerbated by the construction of Highway 41 and some of the other construction that is going on in the area. We will work with staff to make sure that we do provide adequate parking through the site development process or site plan review process. You know, two parking per unit is the city standard for two bedrooms and more, so we will look at that, we will address that with staff as we go through it. Again, traffic was brought up, but it is important to remember that, you know, your multifamily designations are supposed to be next to your higher street classification. 16th Street's a major collector, staff has indicated that they don't anticipate traffic concerns. A major collector can handle about 12,000 vehicles a day. The projected traffic loading on 16th Street, it's in the staff report, in the year 2035 is only 4,000 trips per day. So it's a third of that over the next 10 to 15 years. So those streets are adequate, the KMPO, and John discussed this earlier, modeling took into account these densities in that Highway 41 corridor when they designed that Highway 41. And again, the baggage road, I know that was talked substantially in the previous hearing, but we are the other side of that baggage road with this annexation, so to get that baggage road pushed through to 16th from 12, we are the, in a sense, the other half of that baggage road to get that done. I think I've touched on most everything that was discussed, so any further questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. Ditman? See none?
Thank you.
That'll close the public hearing. So, Council, again, the first question is, is Council interested in annexing this piece of property?
Yes.
It could make sense.
So that answer to that would be unanimous yes, I guess, so let's go through the criteria.
Put this down so you can hear me. Moving through the criteria, the first one is, is the requested zoning consistent with the future land use map?
Yes.
Business commercial.
R3 is allowable in the zone.
Any other comments?
Number two, is it consistent with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan?
Yes, goals and policies, talk about providing a variety of housing types, infrastructure connectivity, pedestrian infrastructure connectivity, et cetera, and this would be consistent with those goals and policies.
Compatible surrounding.
Yeah, compatible surrounding development.
Any other comments? Number three?
Number three, zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features.
Fits the street classification criteria for that density.
Again, I think the biggest challenge I see is the on-street parking, and it's particularly during the winter months, you know, having the swales out there and the sidewalk, if you've got cars parked along that road, you can't throw the snow over the cars into those, quote, "swales" that are designed to handle that rainwater or drainage, so I have a big problem with that, a big concern about that.
Any comments?
Pro-choice always made sense to me.
Sorry.
I meant from Council.
For me, we could darn near cut and paste my comments from last meeting and put it into this one, and that, I know Mr. Ditman's going to hate to hear this, because I was one of the ones that last time said, yes, might make sense, but not right now, because 41 was, hadn't even started that. Reconstruction then, it's not complete now, and of course, the interchange hasn't started yet, so it's not going to be complete for a while. Highway 41 is at least a year behind schedule, which is a bummer, because we would have had some idea if it was complete of how things are flowing, we don't have that yet. Also, my concern three years ago remains the same now, in that, let's build out, everything has been approved along the Highway 41 corridor, let Highway 41 complete, see what, see what everything looks like before we approve anymore. Now, well, since then, several more R3s have been approved along the Highway 1, Highway 41 corridor, and I was on the losing end of those votes, Belsiello 1 and 2, for example. So, this just extends the timeline of my concern of, let's build everything out, see how Highway 41 flows, and with 41 being behind schedule. This one's a little bit tricky, because that baggage road, I think, is also important. The calculus I used on the previous public hearing we just finished was, for me, the trade-off of completing a block of that baggage road for roughly 30 units, I thought was worth it. Same calculus now as the, as another block of it for 90 units, five acres of R3. Had it been R2, then it'd be basically the same calculus, would be a block of baggage road for roughly 30 units, and I probably, and I could have got behind that. This, now, again, I think, okay, it could work, but 41's not there yet, the interchange hasn't even started, we're still building out stuff along 41. No area of Post Falls has been more impacted by growth in the Highway 41 corridor, and I have serious concerns about continuing to add pressure to the traffic along the Highway 41 corridor to the tune of, in this case, 900 trips a day, or week, sorry.
Any comments?
Or is it a day? It's a day, yeah.
One quick question for you before we move on. John alluded to this, Mr. Ditman also alluded to it a little bit. One of the options, if timing is your concern that you have in front of you, and we actually saw this a few months ago with the annexation, is if, if timing is your concern, we can build into the annexation agreement some timing triggers that you don't get development until certain milestones. I don't know what that would look like, because we've not had that discussion, but if that is your, if that's a concern for the Council, one option you would have would be to continue the hearing to allow us to have those conversations and potentially bring back to you a revised annexation agreement that would potentially speak to those timing concerns, if that's the, if that's the concern. Setting that aside now, we can move back through, so.
I do have a question for you on that, is that, I'd be open to that, except that one of my concerns is everything else that's already been approved there getting built out. So, we can't really address that in an agreement, because that depends on other developers building their stuff, and that would be really unfair to try to shoehorn something like that into a requirement, correct?
Fair enough, and I'm throwing that out mostly for the entire body, because I'm not sure where a vote might go, I just, it's something that we don't see a ton of, but it is an option that is available to you when you're dealing with an annexation, because we do have the agreement that we can, we can bake in some of those timing protections if that's where the bulk of the Council wants to go, so.
Okay. Next up.
Number four, commercial and high-density residential is typically assigned along streets with a higher road classification. I think you sort of spoke to that with number two.
Yeah, 16. Yeah, 16 and the major, so.
And then, 5 and 6 are not applicable.
So, about council comments or any further deliberation? We've gone through them all. There's some issues, obviously, some concurrence that meets the criteria, but it's your decision. Terry.
Well, I would like to just throw out, make a motion and see where we land.
Is that all right with everyone? Motion now, you had any further discussion? Go ahead.
I would move to approve the Bell CLO 3 annexation file number ANNX-22-6 with an R3 zoning and have staff prepare the final ordinance for annexation.
Do we have a second? Looks like motion dies for lack of second. How about another motion?
Want to pull up the second one, too?
Which one, to deny?
Same thing, but to deny.
I guess I could. Would you rather? Would you rather? Go ahead.
I don't have it right in front of me, that's why I was asking you.
Same thing. Just motion to deny at the bottom.
Yeah, I just gotta get the whole annexation number in front of me. I would move to deny the Bell CLO 3 annexation file number ANNX-22-6.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
I move to approve, so I want to.
Say nay. You would say, if you're against that motion, your vote would be a nay.
Nay. Thank you. Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Shove?
Aye.
Motion to deny is approved. It's passed.
I don't want to.
Passed. Thank you. The final public hearing tonight is zoning approval criteria file, number TA-22-5. Open to public hearing.
All right, so Title 18, housekeeping of moments. Amendment looking at the zoning criteria ordinance, TA-22-5. So, the applicant is Post Falls Planning Division. You're being asked to review and approve the requested amendment to Title 18 to accomplish obtaining more clarity within the zone change review criteria. The proposed language is in line with the state's lupa, Title 67, Exhibit 2. That'll also be at the end of the PowerPoint to refer to. So, the current criteria, we've kind of gone over that tonight on two public hearings, so I'm not gonna really read them all out. We've gone through the six criteria this evening. Proposed criteria is the first one you're looking at. Is the proposed zoning district consistent with the vision for the area contained in the currently adopted Post Falls Conference of Plan? And does the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing public services within the city, including but not limited to the Post Falls School District? So, how does this all kind of fit in? So, looking at the first criteria and taking into account the six, I, from my standpoint, the first one covers pretty much all six. We have Appendix B, goals and policies, and in our master plan, we have housing section, we got a transportation section, public services, facilities and utilities chapter in the comp plan, parks, recreation, open space chapter, natural resource and hazards, economic development, community design, and characters. So, the goal, Appendix B is a collective set of goals and policies addressing each of those chapters within our comprehensive plan. We also have in our comprehensive plan a future land use map, and we also have a focus area. All of those provide guidance to those goals and policies that address, the number one is the future land use map, two is the goals and policies, three deals with traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, and community plans, four is community and high density, five is dealing with limited neighborhood commercial, where should it go, and six is industrial zoning. So, going through the goals and policies, we hit all those. We find oftentimes when we go through these six criteria, we have two or three that aren't even applicable to the case being proposed. So, by going with the criteria that's being proposed, we can stick to the context of the ask and how it relates to those elements of the comprehensive plan and embody that in the staff report, a little bit different than how they're currently being embodied and presented to you. What our current criteria doesn't do, it doesn't do criteria number two, does the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services by a political subdivision providing public services within the city, but not limited to the Post Falls School District? I know I already read that, but. P&amp;Z forwarded a recommendation to add the unmitigated demonstrable. So, legal mulled this over and staff discussed it, and the path that's being proposed tonight is that we define what a demonstrable adverse impact is. And I kind of highlighted a key point of this is, it's a provable or verifiable negative impact created by the changes zoning classic impacting the ability of a public agency to provide services. So, when we do our notice jurisdictions, we go to, whether it's a gas utility company, fire, police, school, we have a lot of public agencies that we do our notice jurisdictions. Have they stated anything that's provable and verifiable to create a negative impact? And so, hopefully, that could bring up some clarity to that criteria number two. Any questions at this point?
Any questions, John?
So, the other sections of the code is pretty much cleaning it all up. So, you're just cleaning up 181610, which used to have a bunch of language. Now, we're just saying, go to 182100 where the criteria is at, and then you go to 182100, and there's some language there that then gets you to those two criteria in the review process for 182100. So, that kind of cleans it up. So, instead of having our criteria like in two different sections, it makes it kind of difficult, if you were a user of the code before, where are all of our criteria, because we're taking bits and pieces from two different sections. And then, the other element of it is dealing with the annexation, you know, if it was part of an annexation, is it in the best interest of the city? And we highlight that that's a legislative decision versus the quasi-judicial process of like a subdivision or the zoning. Pretty much wraps that up. Here is the Idaho statutes and the highlighted sections from that Title 67, 65. Kind of created the birthing of this criteria, modeling it off that code section, state. Pretty much wraps up staff at this point.
So, you will bring up, the purpose of this then is to provide some clarity and simplification of the criteria and considerations we use in analyzing annexations and/or zoning.
Yes, and in my opinion is that we, and I kind of stated, is we end up at the same place, just with fewer criteria.
The one thing I'd add is, I think we've all wrestled with this a little bit. Our current criteria, they're older criteria, they were adopted frankly before the state law changed 10 years ago-ish that required that you have established clear criteria for how you make quasi-judicial decisions. And so, in the past, we looked at our code, and this is sort of apparent because we're pulling it from two different sections, we had some language in our code that sort of provided that guidance, but it's never really worked real well. As you've worked through this, I think you've seen how this functions or dysfunctions as often as not. We have duplicative criteria, we have, for instance, we'll say something along the lines of, it's zoning is typically assigned along a higher street classification. We ask that in a different way, in a different criteria. We also have criteria that are typically, at least two of the criteria are not going to be applicable. So, trying to clean that up and follow frankly the guidance that the state gives us, which is that you should be looking at your comprehensive plan, and you should be looking on what the state, and this is straight out of the state code, demonstrable negative impact. And so, the definition comes from, we went to a dictionary and said, what does demonstrable mean? And that's where that definition comes from. It's essentially something that's provable, something that's verifiable. And I think that the state's language was intentional. I think what the state legislature was trying to get at is if you're denying people's applications that essentially impacting their property rights, you ought to be doing it based on something that's more than conjecture. There ought to be something based in, in fact, that you can verify. I know there has been some concern about, from members of the public, what position does that leave them in because they're not the school district, they're not the water district, they don't know as well as those districts how this may impact the delivery of service. And I would say that's absolutely true. The school district, a water district, a highway district, they're gonna better understand how the impacts of any particular development may impact them or any zone change. That isn't to say that a member of the public can't go and get their plans and look at it and provide that same information. It's just, it's sort of, it's laying out a bar that it needs to get over this sort of level. I'm getting long, but I've got one more point. And that becomes important because I'm aware of at least two cases in the last five years, one very recently down in Ada County, where a local district court has said, in addition to having essentially express standards for reviewing these things, a court here in Ada County and then a court down, excuse me, here in Cooney County and a court recently down in Ada County have held that those express standards need to also be objective. In other words, almost binary, do you meet it or do you not? So, trying to take as much subjectivity out of the process as possible. Our current standards are pretty fluffy and they're pretty subjective, so it becomes a little bit problematic going forward if somebody wants to challenge a zoning decision, trying to defend that in court, whereas a more objective standard that hews really closely to what the statute says would put us in a better position to defend ultimately whatever the zoning decision is for or against. That was my spiel. Happy to answer any questions.
To me, it's a matter, one second, thank you, Joey. To me, it's a matter of, we're going through, we have gone through a change in the way we review these anyway, and if this is just gonna help simplify and/or add some.
Clarity.
Clarity, yeah. I would be all for it.
I think we do have one person who wants to testify.
Yeah, we're just, let me get one more comment in case it's a question for.
It is a question, but I don't know if it's appropriate now or during discussion, but the, first of all, I think the changes are great for the most part, but the things that I have questions on is demonstrable, you know, has to be provable, what's the burden of proof, you know, what constitutes proof? And then, the addition of unmitigated, what level of mitigation is required?
Yeah, and our recommendation was, if you go back to the definition, John, that's probably the best spot to look. So, I can't give you sort of across-the-board answer because it's probably gonna depend on the case and what the impact is and what the, if it, so if the school district comes in and says, no, this works perfect for us, we don't have any issues, it fits right in with what we're planning, a neighbor says, wait a minute, that, I don't agree with that, they're gonna have to probably step up to the plate a little bit and show why that's the case. I don't think we need to specify sort of what's the quantum of evidence that they need to provide, but there needs to be something in the record that shows that there is a verifiable negative impact. I mean, it's something that's, that is, you can go out and you can calculate in some form or fashion. I think providing this type of direction helps whoever wants to testify understand what they're shooting at, what the mark is that they're trying to get to, versus something that's more subjective that ultimately causes problems down the road. That's a long way of saying, I don't know, because I don't know what the situation's gonna be in any given case. I think this frankly gives people who are going to testify a better understanding of what the goal is that they're trying to get across, what the hoop is that they're trying to get through, as well as providing us a more defensible, more objective standard in the event that we ever have to defend this in court.
Okay. Shannon, I know we should testify. In opposition, Samantha Stiglitter.
It's me again. Like, all my audience is gone. Samantha Stiglitter, Knob Creek. I'm bummed that everyone left because I actually think this is kind of the biggest item on the ballot or on the agenda tonight. So, yeah, I'm the public that had an issue with this. So, let me start, sorry. I've been thinking about this a lot, so I have a lot of thoughts all going in my head. Roosevelt said, be sincere, be brief, be seated. So, I'm gonna try and work towards that. I think really my main issue is that the change in this criteria takes out the ability for public or council, for the public, to have an open discussion on a variety of points about what zone changing does in the city and what that means that builders are due. So, I'm not a power pointer, I'm an exceller, so I'm sorry, I hope that you can read it, I can enlarge it. So, what I did, and I know that the city has this grid somewhere, but I didn't know where to find it, so I just made it myself. So, my understanding after talking with city staff is that by using this criteria, essentially, it becomes much more difficult to deny a zone change if within the future land use map or the comprehensive plan, that focus area or that like zoning area has one of these more specific zones listed in there. So, what I did is I just kind of grafted out. So, like, within low density, it's already said that you can have the RS, the R1S, like all the ones that go across the top, including RM. RM can be in medium, high density, and can be in medium and high density areas of the comprehensive plan. So, if someone buys a house with an area next to their development that is our, that is low density on the future land use map, a developer can come back in, this is my understanding, with the new criteria and ask for a zone change and change it to RM. Well, high-density housing is allowed in RM to a certain extent, and so, with the new criteria, the only entity that can truly oppose that is a public service entity. Like, water can come in and say, for some magic reason, we can't get water to them, or fire can say something, and, or they don't say anything which we take as them meaning that there is no problem at all. And then, the burden of proof is on the public to do a transportation study that we budget at like, what, $100,000 to do a transportation study? That's the bar that we're asking the public to meet to oppose a zone change? And I've had some conversations with both of the city attorneys about this, and when it went to P&amp;Z, I had conversations and was a little bit confused. Actually, I was first in, I was for it until I understood how it was gonna work. So, that's my understanding of how it's gonna work. That's why I'm really opposed to it. I do not think that it helps people who are testifying better understand what they can say, other than the fact of knowing that what they say really can't be taken into consideration because it can't meet the mark of an actual public service that does those. And I'm gonna run out of time. And then, I just took the land use table right from the city's website, and so, you have RM that, I think I highlighted it down here, sorry, this is different than, I look at it on my computer, single family on here somewhere is that it can have high density as well, where, oh, there it goes. So, RM, it's permitted without any special coming back to council, multifamily or R3. So, again, you could buy a piece of property, it be low residential, or low-density residential on the future land use map or the comprehensive plan, and then with this new criteria, since RM is allowed in low density, the zone change could be changed to RM, and there's, you know, you have to get a public service to prove that there would, that would be less safe, less vital, and less attractive to the public, so, sorry.
Thank you.
Tried to be brief. Okay. But it was sincere.
So, yes, so, in the RM, she's correct, it is an implementing zone in the low-density residential. You could get an applicant that proposes an RM, and like we've said this before, the key component of a development agreement that goes with all mixed zones, that's why mixed zones were established, was to give control to the council to either approve or not approve or modify the development agreement accordingly. So, hypothetically speaking, if there was a low-density property and staff saw someone look and propose up to, I believe it's 20% multifamily, and they wanted to maximize it, staff may meet with them ahead of time and go, you got challenges ahead of you, be prepared that that may not bode well for you. Do you have a different option for you going forward? If there is no other option, then we can just give them counsel, and they may choose to proceed forward, but you as a council may not embrace the 20% proposal because you may look at the surrounding environment and the existing development in the area and go, that's not, we wanna throttle that density back down to maybe zero multifamily. You can propose that as part of the development agreement. The applicant does not necessarily have to go down that agreement, and then it's a dead project at that point in time. The reason why there's a P in the residential. The reason why there's a P in the residential mixed zoning district is because they have a potential to ask for up to 20%. It's not necessar, and it's prescribed within the definition of the residential mixed zoning district. But we would still go to the conference of plan and the focus area to see if there's compatibility.
So regardless of whether any public service entity, you know, can or cannot support it, it's assumed they all can, then the council still has the freedom under the criteria that it must match or, or fit with existing development to deny a high-density development in a low-density.
Punt to Warren on this.
So the criteria that are laid out, and these again comes almost verbatim out of state code. Essentially, I'm stepping back a minute, I've been doing this for 20 some-odd years at this point. Every time I've ever gone to training on land use stuff, they say that your yardstick is your comprehensive plan. When you do that plan, you, you have set the vision for your community and your policies and your land use map. When you're applying the zoning, your zoning should be consistent with that plan. So to the extent somebody comes in and says, and different than an annexation, if it essentially boils down to, we don't like it, there's other things that we disagree with. Honestly, those things are not terribly relevant to zoning decisions. That's why in our training, when we talk about this, we make it clear that when you're doing annexation, because that's a legislative decision, you can say, no, we don't want it just because we don't like this one or the timing isn't right. But when you're doing zoning, you have to go through those criteria and only apply those criteria. So I think focusing in on the criteria that the statutes give us, which is, is it consistent with your comprehensive plan? Is it, does it have a demonstrable negative impact on service providers? Hewing close to what the legislature has told us we're supposed to be doing puts us in the best position. So what the debate or the discussion would be that would be relevant if somebody wanted to come in and either pro or con testify about a, a zone change application, they would need to make an argument based in the comprehensive plan somehow that it doesn't match the comprehensive plan. And there's the goals, there's the policies, there's the appendices, there's the future land use maps, there's the focus area, all that feeds into that analysis and that discussion. So as John alluded to, I think you can get to pretty much anything that you want under that comprehensive plan analysis. On the service providers, that's a tougher nut to crack, but that one is the one that's verbatim out of the state code. So that one, I'm, I'm not quite sure how you get around or how you deal with. So I don't know if I answered your question or not, but typically you wouldn't be looking at what's next door. You're looking at what's your comprehensive plan say for this area? Because what's next door may have been developed under a previous plan. It might be in the county that's not subject to your comprehensive plan. That's not the yardstick that the statute tells us we should be measuring from.
I have a question. Warren probably answered that. So do you need to have a representative from the school district, the highway district, whatever? Do they need to testify, provide that?
So, as I tried to indicate, I think the district, whoever's doing the provision of public services, they know their, their deal better than anybody else. They're going to be in the best position to tell you whether there's an impact or not. If there's a, a fire impact, the district's going to be in the best position to tell you what that impact is. But they're not the only one that can tell you that. Anybody can, can come in and make the case for why they think there's a demonstrable impact. And if the council believes that, and the council is free to believe who they want to believe. That's, that's one of the great things when you're sitting as a judge. You get to weigh the evidence, weigh the credibility, the demeanor of the witnesses and decide who you think has the best argument. Anyone can do that. They're not in the best position to start out that analysis, but they certainly can provide that analysis.
But we know that when we put that out on any of it and where all of the agencies have been notified and they're either neutral or will reserve judgment and tell this, that or the other thing. So I guess what I'm curious as how we, do we make personal phone calls to the school district?
That would be an ex parte contact.
I know, but so I guess I'm, I'm a little confused as to who is going to provide that information about
So I think what you-
An adverse impact.
I think what you would see is very similar to what you see today. You'd have a staff report that's going to speak to the criteria. You would also be sending out notification to each of the districts saying, here's the application, here's what the, here's what's being requested, do you have comment? If they have a comment, that will be added into the record. So you'll have a staff report that speaks to it from the staff's perspective. You've provided the opportunity for the districts to weigh in and provide their input. And you're also sending it out to the public saying, here's what we know in our staff report and in what we're receiving from the districts, what is your comments? And then they get a chance to come in and provide their input as well. Just like, very similar to what you're doing today.
But if the district did not provide that information, then what the staff is providing to us to make the decision is very subjective.
Not necessarily. I mean, it's, again, it's, this is trying to make it as objective as possible. You can't get to 100% objectivity, it's just impossible. So we're trying to get this better than we have today, but it's not, this isn't, I don't think there's a, a set of findings anywhere that gets you there 100%. You just, it's just not doable.
I actually like it, but I'm-
Yeah, so it's, so what you would have then is, you're looking for, is there a demonstrable negative impact? Has someone demonstrated to you, yeah, this is going to negatively impact the highway district and their provision of, of, you know, roads or something in their jurisdiction? Or is this going to negatively impact the city's provision of water, sewer, traffic? Those are things that already, we're baking that into our staff report currently.
And they all have point persons. When we do the notice of jurisdiction, they all have an assigned point person that they acknowledge is the person to receive that. They're all busy individuals. We've improved, we've gotten a lot more responses. You've seen that from public hearings like five years ago compared to today on responses. But a lot of them are like, there's no issue, it's not going to adversely affect them. To take a time to do a response, they're not going to respond. And that's generally a common theme amongst all of them. We have a recent one, we got one of the utility gas providers is now newly assigned from Colorado to this region. He's now been assigned. We'll notify him and anytime his corridor gets addressed, he is going to make a comment. If it's not along his corridor, he's not going to comment. But he has definitely some passion and interest on some sections of that. And so we'll weigh that at the time for that gas corridor.
Warren, good discussion, but should I close the public hearing?
There is no more testimony, but sure, you can-
Close the public hearing, then we can carry on any conversation. I have one question. The process that we've begun using helps, I think, direct us, you know, and as we saw tonight on the second one, the council was interested in the annexation, thought it made sense. And he went through the first couple of criteria and met them, and then you get to the timing issue. So my question is this, if we change this, is that going to take away the council's ability to make a decision? Or are we going to be forced into a decision based on these things?
So you, on annexations, you still have the same latitude because you're making a decision based on, on the annexation piece, whether or not you think it's in the public interest. And that's your judgment to make. As I alluded to earlier, there's some things that you can do that get you into hot water, but those are typically discriminatory reasons. If it's a, if it's a legitimate reason, there's pretty much no challenging a denial of annexation. If it's a zone change, and also stepping back for a second, we still would have annexation and zoning agreements. So those, those development agreements that we are bringing, you're still going to see those. You still have the ability to ask for language in those agreements to address concerns that you have. The same is going to be true of development agreements for the mixed-use zones. You still have that. You also have in our code, we have language that says that we require development agreements for mixed-use zones and for annexations, but we also say we can require them in individual instances where they're appropriate for other zoning districts. So there's that as well that you can fall back on and, and say, in this instance, we think this request really should have an agreement that goes along with it that addresses whatever the issue is that comes up, that's germane to the development. As far as, does this force you down a path? I guess I'd answer that with it depends. I don't, it does, but I don't think it does so any more than our current code and what current state law is. Current state law says you can only consider the approval criteria that you've adopted. You can only listen to evidence that's in the record. You can't essentially have ex parte contact. You can't listen to testimony that isn't relevant. Those are, are currently the law, that's not going to change. What this does is focuses you in more tightly, more closely on the comprehensive plan. And I think that's a good thing, honestly. The whole idea of zoning is to say, we're going to follow the, the planning efforts that the city has put into, to deciding what the future should be. And your decision should be matching up with a comprehensive plan, which is what the statute alludes to. It says, your decision should be based on your comprehensive plan. So to the extent that we're making decisions that aren't based on the comprehensive plan, I think ultimately that's problematic down the road. Because at some point in time, someone will call us on it. And so trying to make sure that we're really focusing in on the comprehensive plan because that's, in some ways, it's a compact. We've told the public when we put the plan together, give us your input, help us create this vision, and then we will implement that vision. You can trust us to implement the vision. So this is the implementation step. It's not the big picture step, it's the implementation step. So, does it tie you down? Yes, but no more than what we should be doing anyways and no more than what the law already requires.
But you're bringing up a good point. So Shelley Howells, her comprehensive plan, is it five years? Two years?
Two years, yeah.
Two years? And I guess the question I would have is, you know, you don't want to be updating your comprehensive plan every year and it's a process you have to go through. But if we look at what's transpired over the last few years, is a comprehensive plan what we want it to be?
And that's a fair discussion.
And I'm just throwing it out there.
I think ultimately, the impression I get with this, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, of course, but is that you have an applicant coming in for an annexation or zone change. They know the criteria, they go with city staff to review the criteria to make sure it is correct. It goes before planning and zoning to make sure that it meets the criteria. And then it comes before us to meet the criteria. If it meets the criteria, why does it even come to us if that's the basis for approval?
So the answer to your question is state law. The state law, because, because the planning commission can't adopt an ordinance. It's a legislative act of the city council, it has to come. Anything that requires an ordinance has to come through the, the city council.
So then I guess what it means to me is that our hands are really tied. If it does meet criteria,
Yes.
It passes.
And, and I will say yes with a caveat. What, how, it's up to you in your determination as the city council, when the criteria is, does this comply with your comprehensive plan? You're the ones who are weighing that. You're looking at the focus area, you're looking at the future land use map, you're looking at the goals and policies, and you're saying, how does this fit into that vision? If it fits the vision, then yeah, you probably need to be looking at an approval for that. If you don't like that, I think the mayor's correct, the right approach is to step back and, and take another look at your vision. Because that's where you have the ability to change the roadmap, to change the yardstick. As long as this is your yardstick, that's the tool you have to measure everything against. And, and state law tells you that, you have to measure everything using the yardstick you've got until you change it.
I think the difficulty in me for that is, you know, one of the goals we have is to involve the community in, in planning and decision-making. Well, I mean, I think everyone here is, is aware. I think the public spoke pretty loudly last November on the kind of decision-making changes that they wanted to be made. And yet our comprehensive plan is, predates that effect on this council. So I, I think it is problematic that we have what seems to be, in light of all the changes that we've seen in this community in the last two or three years, an outdated comprehensive plan if we take the results of the last election as to what I think they should be.
And, and I can't speak to that. I mean, I've had this conversation with, with the mayor a little bit. At the end of the day, our advice, our job as staff is to provide you our best advice, to tell you where we think the, the tough issues are, where we think you might get into trouble, what we think in our professional judgment is the best approach. At the end of the day, you're the elected officials, we march to your drum. If you say you want to go that way after listening to our advice, we go that way. And that's, that's the nature of the jobs that we have, and we're okay with that. I think the concern that we're trying to, with this, is trying to make sure that, well, we're trying to do a couple of things. One is we're trying to make it easier for you and for us and for the public by having more understandable criteria. But to the extent that we're tying you down, this is what we cover in our land use training all the time. This is, this is not new. This is state law. The decisions that made zoning decisions, land use decisions, quasi-judicial decisions, those date to the 70s. This is providing due process, making sure we're protecting people's property rights, complying with a state code that says you have to have adopted criteria. Those are things that we, we sort of hit because, yeah, it's kind of frustrating. You, you don't run for election wanting to have to sit here and say, I love what you're saying, but it's not relevant to our criteria, so I have to disregard it. That's not fun. That's, that's a terrible, I've not done it, but I've watched it be done, and it's not fun.
I think it's a thing if you want to listen to, you know, the community at large and what they want, also while protecting private property rights and what's within the law and not getting, as a good steward of the community, not getting the city into legal jeopardy.
Yeah, and where it's, where you have the latitude really is on the planning side, the, the planning. Where you are saying, what is the vision? That's, when we say there's a planning and zoning commission, it really is two separate functions. Planning is, what do we think the community should be? Well, how do we get there? Let's put the plans together and let's go down that road. That's based on all sorts of public input, outreach, and it's a legislative decision. You can consider whatever you want. When it comes to the, the zoning piece of it, where you're applying that standard, that's where you get into the quasi-judicial realm, where you're really looking at, here's our standards, here's our criteria, here's the evidence that came in. Does it meet the criteria or not? If it meets the criteria, it gets approved. If it doesn't meet the criteria, it gets denied. And that, in that context, you're sitting as a judge, not as a legislator. And so it's, I think it's really difficult. I've seen councils struggle with this for 20 some-odd years for the public to understand that there are two different things going on here oftentimes. And come to the legislative stuff, tell us what you think. When you come to the hearing, tell us how it meets the standard or not. And we do our best in the outreach to try to make that clear. We put the criteria in our notices, we put it on our website. We're trying to get everything out there so people can do that. But I'll be honest, it's an uphill climb. It is an uphill climb. Sure.
A few things, I'll try to keep it short and, and understandable if I can. But to Counselor Ziegler's point, so the, the comprehensive plan has been approved before this current council. So if everybody on this council is bound by that plan, then isn't that a previous council tying the hands of a current council?
Yes and no. You can, you can bind future councils, we do it with contracts all the time. You can do that. There are times and places you can't. It's typically in entering a contract that incurs a debt or liability that extends beyond a, a one year. That's typically where you see those types of things, where the constitution comes into play. But, yeah, you can bind future councils.
Second thing is the annexation piece. And I say, we've got all this freedom to annex or not, but the, the way it's, you can't have an annexation without a zone. And so I've, I've talked about this before in recent meetings, that that whole concept that an annexation is yes or no, it, it isn't, it's like a, yeah, but, yeah, it makes sense if this, but it doesn't make sense if that. So then we've got to say, yeah, it could make sense, I suppose. And then we get into the whole zoning criteria. So, and, and then, then we're bound by the comprehensive plan and all that sort of stuff. So it really doesn't, the annexation piece of it, we just have to start saying, if it could possibly be anything other than, you know, what we want, then we just got to say no to everything. Right off the bat.
I would say this might be a good workshop topic for us to sort of sit down and talk about how, how to approach the annexation and zoning conundrum. There are some other ways that we can approach this that have been tried elsewhere. You also have the freedom to say, we think the annexation makes total sense, we don't like the zoning. So we're, we're willing to give you a yes on the annexation, but we're going to say no to R3, or RM, whatever it happens to be, and say, come back with a different zoning request. And send it back to the planning commission to have a different request. I mean, there are different things that you can do that tries to speak to that, the annexation piece. It doesn't have to be just annex it with the zoning they've requested. You can say, we would annex this property, the annexation makes sense, the zoning doesn't. Go back and start over.
But the step would be denying the annexation?
You can deny the zoning. You can deny the zoning independent of the annexation.
But only if the zoning doesn't match the criteria put in place in the comprehensive plan.
So in practice, what would happen is, you say, we want to annex this, we think annexation makes a ton of sense, we don't like the zoning, we're denying your requested zoning, go back to the Planning Commission, ask for a new zone, and get us another recommendation.
But can we deny, can we deny the zoning based on anything? Or do we have to deny it based on the fact the zone doesn't meet the comprehensive plan?
That's where your hands are tied by state law. Essentially, you have to base it, your decision, when you're doing the quasi judicial evaluation, which includes initial zoning, that wasn't true 10 years ago. The state law changed that made initial zonings appealable and made them quasi judicial decisions. It used to be that initial zoning decision was not appealable. That has changed. So, yeah, that, that initial zoning or a zone change has to be based on your criteria, and your criteria alone.
And denial of the initial zoning has to be based on the criteria, correct? All right, so yeah.
Yeah, so it's...
It's no different than a zone change for somebody that's already in the city.
And that's where, I get the struggling, I get the frustration. I totally understand where you're at.
I got one more. Hopefully, it's just one more. So, we've got the comprehensive, the future land use map. And on it is, you know, it's all vague, because we don't know how the development patterns are actually going to materialize in real life. And so, we make it pretty vague and fairly open to various uses, so that it can, it can fit whatever development starts happening there. So, say we've got, on the future land use map, you know, it's low density residential, which includes everything from R1 all the way up to residential mixed. I think even CCS is in that, as an implementing zone, perhaps? Or...
Not the low density.
Commercial mixed, something like that. Anyway, high density stuff. And so, we say, yeah, that sounds fine, because we don't know exactly how it's going to develop out. If it starts developing out fairly high density to begin with, then it would make sense, at that point, when there's additional annexations, to continue down that path. If it starts to develop out in true low density R1 or even R1S, and then later on, right next to a bunch of pre-existing R1, they want a bunch of commercial mixed or residential mixed with full 20% apartments, three stories right next to it, then I would say at that point, well, it doesn't fit the surrounding uses, it doesn't fit the way it's been developing out at this point. And what you're telling me now is, I can't say no to that, because residential mixed or, or commercial mixed is an implementing zone in the comprehensive land use map, regardless of what has begun to develop in that area in the first place.
I wouldn't go that far. I think that you can say no. I think you just have to couch it in the terms of, how does it meet the comprehensive plan? Our, our comprehensive plan is not so tight that it says, you have to have R3 here. You will not find that in our plan. You won't find a plan that says you have to have commercial here.
And what we've got is a plan that says you can have it here.
It says, in this part of town, we envision these types of uses. These are the types of zoning districts that we envision. And we envision residential, or high density residential along roads that look like this. We envision low density development in a place over here where there's less traffic. All of that's sort of baked in, into the focus area, the future land use map designations, to try to provide some guidance as to where certain types of uses in certain parts of the community should go. It's not so tight to say, that's the only use that fits in that location. And heaven help us if we ever make it that tight, because you've, you've turned your, your comprehensive plan into a zoning ordinance, and it's, it's unworkable at that point.
I don't know if anybody else has... At this point, I think this is a longer conversation than, than we've got time for tonight. So I would move to table this, to table this item until such a point as we can complete a council workshop on the topic.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Wish passes, thank you. It's good discussion, I think it does need a workshop, and I think including the workshop, we may have one to think about a comprehensive plan review. Okay, unfinished business, returning ordinances. We have a Utilities Impact Fee Methodology Memorandum.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for your time tonight. I'm going to say upfront, this one's a little bit unusual, seems to be the theme of tonight. Typically, we're coming to you with recommendations, and this is a little more at your discretion. So, a couple options at the end, and we'll work our way through kind of what I'm presenting, and see if you want to pursue it further or not. Basic idea is to present some initial information about impact fees, and how they would relate to calculating those for utility services, and if we want to explore that further, as opposed to the existing method that we do. So, overview of discussion, a little bit of history on capacity fees in Post Falls, why right now we might be considering a utility impact fee, comparing the two types of fees, including pros and cons of each, and then options for next steps. So luckily, John Beecham, Public Works Director, in June, did a great job at a staff update, going over capacity fees, how they're calculated. I've stolen a couple slides from that, so if this looks familiar, it's because you saw it not too, too long ago. Capacity fees are authorized by Idaho Code, and some court cases have framed the fee and how they can be charged, and, you know, what the calculation is to determine what that would be. So in Loomis versus Haley, the big takeaway there was the methodology of dividing the net system replacement value by the number of users the system can support for calculating a capacity fee. In NIBCA versus Hayden, the major decision that came out of there was, it was limited to the cost of replacing existing infrastructure. And you'll hear existing infrastructure and capacity fees, that's really the big takeaway for capacity fees. It's for replacement of existing infrastructure. So, in 2017, the FCS group, and Jason already talked about this today, the FCS group developed a legally defensible methodology for calculating utility capacity fees. That is our existing method for cost recovery of capital improvement projects, is through capacity fees. It's important to note, at that time, the general preference was to keep our fees reasonably in line with our regional neighbors. We didn't want to be a big outlier from the communities that surround us. Looking forward to, or looking, you know, to fiscal year '23, or the most recent information I could pull quickly, right now, for sewer capacity fees, Coeur d'Alene is $3,325. Hayden, $10,404. And Rathrum and Post Falls, kind of somewhere in between 7570 and the fee schedule that was presented today, would have our capacity fee for sewer at $6,959. So, I would say we are sort of maintaining that, you know, reasonable compared to our neighbors, not the high, not the low. The capacity fee is striking that balance as current. Wordy slide, but why now? Why are we considering this right now? So in February of this year, brought forth a contract for a facility planning study for the water reclamation facility. That process is ongoing, we're doing some studying there. Part of that, we wanted to look at cost recovery methodology for the projects that will be listed, the capital improvement projects that will be listed in that facility plan. So, in trying to build the financial plan as part of that facility plan, impact fees and our alternative cost recovery methodology, so we wanted to see if that would be appropriate for, for our capital improvement projects. If we're going to do it for the water reclamation facility, we would likely look to implement it for our collection system, as well as our drinking water system. So, it would likely spread to all utilities. Capacity fees and impact fees, again, some of this is going to be review. Capacity fees authorized by code. Calculating, as we've gone over, dividing net system replacement value by the number of users the system can support. And again, limited to the cost of replacing existing infrastructure. So as a growing community, we're always trying to catch up a little bit on properly funding projects. So, that capacity fee is updated annually and listed in the adopted fee schedule, review from earlier tonight. Some pros and cons of capacity fees. To their benefit, they're the simplest methodology to track and administer. It provides consistency right now, if we're sticking with capacity fees, between what future customers will pay, and what customers, since the Hayden decision, have paid, it has that consistency. Some negatives to capacity fees, it doesn't allow for cost recovery of planned future projects. And that planned part is, is important as well. So we can't do that until those facilities are online. Even if a construction project is underway, we can't charge or include that calculation until those facilities are online. So that basically means we're, we're asking either ratepayers or loan obligations to support growth-related capital improvements until those improvements are online. So we're burdening, or like I said, we're asking the existing ratepayers to, to front-load the cost for the, the expansion projects. Impact fees, also authorized by Idaho Code. It's a little bit more complicated calculation, but dividing the gross share of existing and future improvement costs by the capacity to serve that growth. And allows for cost recovery of future planned projects. It would be updated annually by a methodology which would be approved by ordinance. Some pros and cons of impact fees, as they would relate to utility service, it allows for cost recovery of planned projects prior to us making expenditures on those. It's a defensible method for the highest level of cost recovery, if we wanted to take it to, to that extreme. The big negative for impact fees is the administrative burden that it would bring. There'd be an advisory committee, our capital improvement plans would need to be updated at least every five years, make sure we have up-to-date engineers' costs, probable costs for projects. We'd have to have earmarked accounts for those funds and issue refunds if those funds aren't expended within a certain amount of time. And there's annual reporting requirements that would go with, with an impact fee. Some other considerations, as, as we're trying to balance this initial information. Nampa, the city of Nampa, is moving forward with an impact fee for utility service, and to my knowledge, that's the only other city in Idaho that is doing so. So, all fees, as we know, are contentious. Adding a second fee might put a target on our back, target on our back. It would be unique and possibly somewhat expensive for this area. And miscalculation, something else that's come out of cases, would require repayment of the full fee, not just the difference between what it should have been and what they paid. So again, we would want that legally defensible methodology if we were going to move forward with an impact fee. So, again, going back to, this was a, an alternative within the, the contract that was brought to you for the full facility plan. So the, the outlay for this, or the expense for pursuing, if we wanted to move forward with an impact fee, is in that plan. It would be from the management reserve task to FCS and not to exceed $36,940. So that contract, again, has already been signed. What I'm asking for tonight is options for you guys, impact fees for utility services. A couple options, you might decide right now that it is worth exploring further if an impact fee would be appropriate for us. If you say yes to that, that isn't signing us up for moving forward with impact fees, it's just developing that legally defensible methodology that we'd bring back, probably be worthwhile to present in a workshop, fully dig into the details of it, and then consider that for adoption. You could decide right now that, you know, hearing what we've heard, I don't think an impact fee would be right for us. We're going to stick with our capacity fee methodology. There'd be no further effort on this task item in the facility plan, and we would stick, we would build our financial plan based off of our existing capacity fee methodology. And if this is a lot, because you've been presented with a lot tonight, and would want to table this, have some other questions, read the memo that was included in the council packet for some more details, you know, we can bring it back in, in a future council meeting. So, that was a lot.
You got to do it quick.
I will add one comment. One of the cons he had for the impact fees was the accounting for it. We do already do that accounting for transportation, public safety, and parks. So for our finance department to do that form of accounting is something they're already doing.
Already exists. You know, my, my initial thought is, impact fees, although we've increased them a couple times and had really no pushback the last couple times we've done it, we've gone through some real pushback with the developers. And I think impact fees are, to me, a capacity fee, or a capitalization fee, either one. When you look at the cap fee, that's something you just understand you're going to pay. Switching it over to an impact fee, I don't know if, it may have some negative connotations or resistance. So, it may make sense, but I'm kind of, I guess, ambivalent as to which way council wants to go on that.
So what would be the, what would be the cost of exploring an impact fee outside of staff time, and how much staff time roughly are we talking about to, to run all the numbers, see how everything comes out in the wash versus a cap fee?
Sure. So, I guess, just make sure I understand your question, Councilman Malloy. The, the, developing the methodology would be tasked to our consultant and their subconsultant, FCS group. And so, that defensible methodology would be tasked to them, cost not to exceed $36,400.
Right off the bat. Sorry, it's been a long night.
Yes, but...
That number rings a bell.
So, then, time to prepare, and this memo has, has gone through Jason's group, Shelley, Warren, you know, have looked at it. So there would be, you know, a burden when we would be bringing it back to you, to be able to, you know, again, explore, explain, maybe make a recommendation. So there would be still staff, the staff time, but the actual development, we would task with, with FCS group.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me, sorry.
Questions, comments, directions?
I would say for 36 grand and change, it's a pretty low cost to, to find out what our options are. And I don't think it hurts to, to walk into a decision eyes wide open, this, these are the exact dollars and cents, here's how we would do it, does it make sense or not? So I would support, as long as it doesn't bind us anything, aside from the staff time and the, and the subcontractor, I'd, I'd support exploring an impact fee further.
Is that a motion?
I just kind of, I kind of want to hear everybody else's thoughts, too.
No, I would agree with you, Joe. I think the more information is good, learning more.
Make a better decision.
Better decision.
Right, I don't feel like I have enough information yet, so, I would agree.
So let me rephrase that question, is that a motion?
Now let's make it a motion. I would move, I would move to direct staff to further explore an impact fee and approve the contract with, who's this up?
FCS.
FCS.
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed.
$36,940.
$36,940 and 17 cents.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wish passes, thank you. Thanks, Craig. Next up, first ordinance, Jackman Prairie Annexation.
Do we need, need us to do that?
We just need anybody to make a motion.
I move to place the ordinance, Jackman Prairie Annexation File ANNX 00122021 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Wish passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls, municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 94.049 acres. It's part of the south half of Section 19 and the north half of the northwest quarter of Section 30, all in Township 51 North, Range 4 West Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, providing for the event amendment to the official zoning map, providing for an effective date hereof.
You make the next motion?
Yep. I move to approve the ordinance, Jackman Prairie Annexation File Number ANNX 00122021, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number, and that it be published by summary only.
Second. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Wish passes, thank you. Next item up is the Point Zone Change.
He's on a roll.
I move to place the ordinance, the Point Zone Change File Number RZNE 00012022 on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
to community commercial mixed zoning district, providing for amendment of the official zoning map to reflect this change, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in Section 1 are hereby superseded and providing an effective date.
I move to approve the ordinance, the Point Zone Change File Number RZNE 00012022 and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only. Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Roll call.
Chauv?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Worsht passes, thank you. Next item up is new business and we have two items, property purchase and lease agreements with Terry Jordan for Corbin Lift Station.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you again for your time tonight. I'm up to speak with you guys about, speak about a Corbin Lift Station and a property purchase agreement and a lease agreement related to the replacement project for that lift station. The Corbin Lift Station replacement project, there was an engineering contract brought before council in April this year to design a replacement of that lift station. The proposed contract tonight relates to that and we're looking to purchase land, so we have a bigger footprint for the built-out lift station, as well as lease some land, which would aid and make construction of the new lift station easier. So, land purchase and lease, I'm hopeful that some of those details of the replacement project are fresh enough in your mind of, that it was a replacement project in the master plan, kind of the, the details behind it, that I'm skipping a lot of that, keep it a little bit shorter and just talk about the land purchase and the lease. So, some of the timing of this is driven by a unique opportunity where the, the landowner is moving the business location and that land will be somewhat underutilized for a little bit of time. So we saw an opportunity to sneak in there, take care of a project that's listed in the master plan. The, the master plan actually originally had this lift station being moved across Seltice and that would be very expensive to do. So taking advantage of this opportunity, it seemed to make a lot of logical sense, which is why we pursued it. The owner of Jordan Sales was very amenable to what we were asking for. And so those details have been worked out in these agreements. So we negotiated a land purchase for the lift station and then a lease for construction. So, talking about the, the purchase, on the slide, you can see the, the footprint of the existing site. It's a, a smaller, undersized site, really close to Seltice. The proposed site is closer to our regional lift station sizing 75 feet by 100 feet. It does a couple of things for us. It allows us to add emergency storage in that redesign and move some of those facilities farther off Seltice so our vehicles can get in there and, and not be parking right on Seltice when they need to access the site. So for the purchase, the financials of that, for that site would be $150,000, which is in line with commercial property fronting Seltice. And, and, yeah, so the 150 would be for the purchase and that would be funded through the collection system land acquisition budget as listed. Moving to the lease, the proposed lease area is, is a larger footprint that would be just for a shorter duration while we complete the improvement project. I don't know if you've been by the water reclamation facility or even our Ponderosa Lift Station, which is under construction, but construction requires a big footprint. So the proposed lease area is, is a portion of that parcel as shown in the yellow tan, whatever it looks like to you guys. And the financials, that would be a monthly lease rate of $1,500. That would end up being a lot less than if we were forced to do the construction on that smaller footprint. We would have to do a lot of shoring and additional construction measures, which would end up costing quite a bit of money. So, this is actually a cost savings by, by getting that footprint to work on. This would be funded by the lift station specific project budget with the GL code listed. So those are the two items in these purchase and lease agreements for the Corbin Lift Station replacement.
Questions, Craig?
Do you know roughly how many months of lease you're looking at for that?
Uh, yes. So, design is underway and we're hoping to start construction spring of next year. So, month-wise, I believe the initial is listed at 15 months. And if for some reason there are construction delays, there's some allowance in there for, for that. But we're trying to be aggressive and pre-procurate equipment to shorten that construction timeframe.
Any questions?
I love it. I would move to approve the property purchase and lease agreements with Terry Jordan for Corbin Lift Station.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
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 Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Worsht passes, thank you. Next item up is the resolution authorizing the procurement of replacement dump trucks.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members. Ross Junkin, Public Works Maintenance Manager. I don't have a presentation, but my understanding is that we, I'm bringing forth a resolution for you to consider. We're running into difficulties trying to purchase and replace equipment in our fleet. We've got a couple dump trucks that are currently out of service. One is inoperable, the other one is too expensive to repair. Costs have gone up considerably in the last few years, especially this last year. Earlier this year, we had a budget approved in '22 to replace a couple dump trucks. We put them out for bid and received no bids. That was unfortunate, so we talked to legal and they counseled us to go look on the open market. So we did and we reached out to three different vendors locally and only one of them would consider it. And it came back with a decent price tag. However, it is, the, we're able to piggyback off of Washington State's purchasing contracts. So they prebid or they've negotiated with contractors and for dump trucks of this, the class that we're looking at, there's a 40% discount provided through that, through that state contract. So, I'm here tonight asking for approval to, if you have it in front of you, I'm not sure if you do or not, but a, the resolution is to procure replacement of these dump trucks on the open market.
Ross, we could piggyback with the state of Washington, you said?
They've offered the contract or allowed us to pick, jump onto that contract as well at the same pricing.
So we buy it through them or we still buy it through the local?
Still buying through Freightliner Northwest.
Okay.
They offer the contract reduction in price.
Gotcha. So we just need approval of the resolution to, okay.
Yes. It's a stupid question, but these dump trucks are also used in snow removal, correct?
Correct.
So it'd be really, really important to get this done before the snow starts flying?
Yes. Unfortunately, we're still on, at the mercy of the builders and with the, the supply chain issues and the lack of building force that they have, we may not get them for next winter. We don't know. They're not giving us a guarantee. There's a potential, though.
Our next option is putting plows in all of your vehicles and asking you to assist.
On my motorcycle.
On your Harley, yeah. Do we have an approximate dollar figure?
We do. In the memo that was included, the two dump trucks, so there's two different dump trucks. One's a tandem axle, the other one's a single axle. They both include plows and sanders. So obviously the tandem's a little bit more expensive. And I also am asking for a 10% contingency because we don't know what's going to happen between now and then as far as costs. For both of them together, the number was $763,772.98.
$98.98.
Thank you.
That was the discounted price.
I know.
A lot of money.
So that was a 58%, 59% increase over three years.
Yeah, which is, that's exactly the direction everything's going. It's nuts. So I love it. I would move to approve the ordinance, the resolution authorizing the procurement of replacement of dump trucks for the street department on the open market.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Walker?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Chauv?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Worsht passes, thank you. Next item up is citizens' issues and I think the only citizens left are employees, so any of you want to take a risk?
They can speak as well. Send us an email.
Followed by administrative staff reports and tonight we have none?
We have none.